Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Present tonight are board members Mary Beth Burns, Scott Gingold, Beth McLennan, Clara Weinberg, and is it Violetta or Violetta?
Violetta.
Violetta Colon. My name is Matt Rogers, the current chairman, therefore we do have a quorum. Also present tonight from the city are zoning staff Melissa Klotz. This is a formal hearing and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most important, only one person speaks at a time to accurately record the proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is to hear from the staff on the documents on file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After hearing from the applicant or appellant, any person with a legal interest of property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or closing statement. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please state your name and address and be sure to sign up on the provided sign-up sheet. We are audio and video recorded in this space. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can properly be recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. When all of the testimony, evidence, and statements have been received, the board will close the record and begin its deliberation. We usually try to adjourn by 11 o'clock. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. We have four items on the agenda tonight, one of which I know is going to be withdrawn, and one is a continuation from a previous meeting. I know that Mr. Engelmann is here with his clients. Is the other?
Yes.
Oh, there, there, okay. Are here. We're going to bump you one back in the agenda because we are not able to have city attorney present at the time, and because of the matter that's being addressed at that time, we'd like to have representative from the city law department here. So therefore, we have the next piece of business for us to address is the approval of our minutes from our meeting on November 5th. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Is there a motion to?
I have two corrections.
Okay.
The first is on page three, which is under New Business 1311 Elmwood Avenue. The second-to-last paragraph of that case, I don't think I suggested that 20 years to allow the approval, the installation of those AC units. I think it was two. On the next page then, at the very top, under 3110 Thayer Street, the architect's last name is Keehan, which is K.E.E.H.A.N.
I see.
Are you? The 20 years is in response to when I asked, remember I asked how long an AC unit, like how long a compressor would?
Aha.
Yeah, that's your answer.
And I think you did.
I did say 20 years, sorry.
Yeah.
Wow. Wasn't reading for comprehension. Okay.
All right, so it appears we have one correction, which is the spelling of the architect's Any other corrections? If not, is there a motion to adopt those minutes?
Sure, I move that we adopt the minutes from Tuesday, November 5th, 2013, as written with a correction for the spelling of the architect. And I'm sorry, what case was that misspelled?
It was the.
On page four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? I will also note that the members who have not voted were not present at that meeting, but the minutes are adopted. Therefore, we move into our business for this evening. As I mentioned earlier, the matter for 3110 Thayer Street, we're going to hold off on till about 8 o'clock. So we're going to begin with the new business item for 1405 Leonard Place. If I could have that read into the record, please.
Andrew Giraltowski and Margaret King, property owners, apply for major zoning relief to construct a one-story addition. The applicants request a west side yard setback of 1.9 feet where a minimum five feet is required. Zoning Code Section 6847A3. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are variance application submitted September 20th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated June 17th, 2013, site plans, elevations, letter of support from 1409 Leonard Place, images of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and Spark draft meeting minutes of November 6th, 2013.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? If I could have anyone who feels they may give testimony on this matter to be sworn in at this time, if you please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. If you please just step up and give us your name and address.
My name is Andrew Giraltowski. Address is 1405 Leonard Place, homeowner.
My name is Margaret King, and I live at 1405 Leonard Place.
My name is Thomas Solomon. I'm the architect for the project, and the address of the business is 1234 Sherman.
And Joe Kirsch from Studio Tel Architecture as well, same address.
Thank you. Mr. Giraltowski, if you could please tell us about your project.
Yes, the project is a one-story addition to the back of the home. Existing, and the addition is to include dining room and family room space. Our existing home is an eat-in kitchen. We have a bedroom on the first level serving as an office, and one sort of open room that's a combination living room, family room. So the purpose of the addition is to have an eating space separate from the kitchen, a proper formal dining room, and have a family room such that we can have a separate living room, family room, and then repurpose the, or recover rather, our bedroom on the first level as a bedroom, and use our front space as a combination living room office. So what we're trying to achieve is a dining room, family room at the back of the property. What we want to do is have it in line with the west side of the home to extend straight back, but a unique aspect of our property is that it doesn't run parallel with the lot line, it's at an angle, such that at the front of the home, so the existing home is already within five feet of the west property line. It already is, does not have a five-foot setback. And because it runs at this angle, at the front, there's a three-and-a-half-foot setback, and at the rear, it's two-and-a-half, so that setback decreases as you move towards the back of the home. So we're not looking to extend out further west, we're just looking to go straight back from the home, but in order to do so, we need the major variation. We've explored options to increase the setback. One option was to have the addition sort of offset towards the east, but if we were to do that particular option, there's a couple problems. One, the double doors that lead out to the patio that we would use as the hallway or the entrance into the addition is on the west side. So if you have this offset addition, one thing that would happen is we would need to open that up to the addition space, which would require us to remove the windows in the kitchen, and there would be support issues, so we'd have to spend money to do that. It would also place the kitchen in the middle of the home, and light is of, receiving light into the kitchen is of particular importance to us. We've also considered, still do it, the L shape, it's an L-shaped type design, as hopefully you can see from the drawing, and it's, what we've explored is can we still do that L-shaped design, where you still receive light into the kitchen, where you don't have to touch the back part of the home and open it up, and, but if we shift too far to the right or to the east, then the entryway becomes so narrow that you can't really, you can't achieve a dining room space as you walk out. So all we could really do is have a hallway back to a family room. The other important thing is with the design that we're going with that requires the variation, what you'll notice is with the family room, we are able to shift that to the east to minimize the amounts of the addition that requires the setback. So it's only the dining room space that is within five feet. The family room would not be within five feet. And I suppose lastly, we've reviewed the site plans with our neighbor to the west, the one that would be impacted, Jay and Marcia, and they had no objections. They said they fully support it, and they drafted a letter, which hopefully is included in the file. I suppose that concludes my testimony.
Thank you. Quick question, because I know I just heard it over here. There was mention of the air conditioning condensers not having to be moved. Where are they currently located on the property?
They're on, they're on the east side, next to the existing house right now, underneath the window.
Oh.
Right, right over here.
So you're pointing to the window that is?
Just behind the kitchen. Or in front of the kitchen, I guess, south of.
So it's kind of where the laundry room is marked on the existing floor plan?
Yes.
And there's no plan to add any additional condensers or anything like that with the addition of the house? How many bedrooms are currently in the house?
Four. There's three upstairs. We have two boys, so two boys, us, and then one on the first level.
And that's the one that you plan to make into an office, you said?
No, it's currently an office.
Okay.
We want to recover it as a bedroom.
Okay.
And so the large space, the existing large space would become a living room, office area.
All right.
I'd like to ask a question of the architects. So it seems to me that there is a fairly easy opportunity here to move that dining room to the east, because you can take that east wall and die it into one of the mullions of the existing windows, so you don't have to get rid of all the windows, just one of them, and then you have a conforming situation. I understand that there'll be a compromise with the doors to the family room, and that you won't get a pair of doors plus two side lights.
Do you have to do any of this?
Yep. Just sliding it over to that mullion.
Right. And then the circulation is, I think the issue with that is the circulation. You're kind of running right into the table to do that.
Think you changed circulation. But, okay, so that was the only, so that's the only, there are no other options that you looked at separate from the solution that you've come up with?
No, I think Andy mentioned that we did, we did look at a couple of others, but they felt that the cost of, you know, if we move, if we occupy the space right behind it, then there's demolition and costs associated with that, headering itself. And then also, not insignificantly, the kitchen gets buried in the middle of the house and farther from natural light.
And do you have an estimate on what the total cost of construction?
Yeah, you guys want to talk about the conversation?
We spoke with the general contractor, and he listed the cost of construction between $115,000 and $130,000.
Okay. And so a header is perhaps 1% of that?
Right, no, that's not it. There's the demolition cost, the structural cost, and then the impact of the natural light of the room, for the two reasons.
Okay. Thank you.
It appears on the addition that you have the, what would be the rear wall of the building elevated so that you have a roof that slants down onto the dining area, is that correct?
Yep.
Because one of my concerns is always what goes on the second floor of any first-floor addition, because we often have people come back and say, we have this wonderful first-floor addition, we'd like to add a second story to it. So that's something that at least helps discourage that. Other questions?
That was the reason, but it's just for the view to the backyard.
Other questions from other board members?
But the area over the dining room is a flat roof. It is not sloped, so the area that you're asking for the variance on is flat.
That's true.
So it's possible to build a second floor above that.
It'd be possible to rip off the roof of a sloped roof, too. And in terms of the plan of the house, this is the master suite, so you'd have to get through a bedroom to get to any additional space that you'd be adding.
And is that currently built out as a master suite, or is that something that you're doing?
No, there's no work on the, that's already an existing master bedroom.
Okay. Seeing none. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to us on this particular matter this evening? Seeing no one in the room. Unless you have anything else that you would like to add, we'll go ahead and close our record and begin our deliberation then on this particular matter. Thoughts from the board?
You guys know I don't think it meets the minimum standard necessary. I think there's an opportunity to move, to slide that over without removing all light to that kitchen, and I think that since there are, since there does seem to be an option, and there is nothing particularly unique about a tight side yard setback, it's fairly common across building types and lots and locations in Evanston, that I'm generally opposed to this.
I take your point. My sort of thinking in response is because of the strange positioning of the house and the fact that it just extends that line, and also for a minimum because it's offset by the other part of the extension, that it sort of mitigates a little bit against a blatant desire to kind of just continually encroach on that line. I think they're really just trying to follow the form of the house, and they are minimizing it by offsetting the addition some ways in where the family room extends on.
Right, I certainly do appreciate that. They didn't go all out and ask for everything, so absolutely appreciate that. I just, for me, I feel very strongly about these setbacks, and that continuing the existing edge of the house isn't reason enough to put, to be able to go over the side yard setback, so.
I mean, I can definitely see both points. I think it is interesting that the setback has, that they have stepped it back away from where it was, if you were to draw a straight line from the front of the house to the rear of the house. I have some of the same concerns that have been expressed about the fact that shifting it over a little bit is going to make it completely conforming, and we would not have to grant any sort of a setback. But I'm also cognizant of the fact that the building does sit on a slanted lot line, which makes things a little more interesting in terms of the house sitting square and the lot line not being square. The one thing I also would note is that because of the way the property is situated, we're dealing with the side that actually most closely affects a neighboring house. One of the things I often look at is, you know, even if we have a side yard setback that's being encroached upon, the fact that the vexed house may begin 10 feet away lessens somewhat that impact.
Where's the position of the house to the west? It's not on the plat.
It's, if you look at the kind of Google Earth overview, you can see how the house that is at 1409 basically appears to run almost lot line to lot line. Not seeing the true lot lines on the Google Earth picture, it's a little hard to tell, but I mean, the house does not appear to have a large side yard one way or the other. Does anybody else have any general thoughts? If not, one of our things that we have to do is we have seven standards that we must go through in order to make sure that the requested variation does meet these seven standards before we can grant any sort of a variation. So with that, we'll go through those positions. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. I don't believe that it will have an adverse impact. We have a letter from the neighbor who would be most directly impacted, saying that they do not have an issue with the proposed building, so I believe that that standard has been met. The requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance obviously provides for people to make additions as they see fit, provided that they are in keeping with many of the other standards that we have. I don't feel that we are being asked to block side yards, visions, or light, air, any sort of that sort of stuff from the neighboring house, although I did note earlier that the houses appear to be quite close at that end, but I believe that this standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. This one, I would say because of the fact that the house sits square on an angled lot, or the house sits angled on a square lot, I don't know exactly which one it is, that it does present a little bit of a difficulty in trying to extend the house back and not affect drastically the amount of space that is being taken up by the house and the side yards or the rear yard. It appears to be not a major addition in terms of wanting to build a very, very large family room. It seems to be what I would consider to be an average-sized family room. So I feel this particular standard has been met.
Can I interject that I don't think this particular standard has been met?
Yes, you can.
Because I don't think it's unique to Evanston lots. I think that in my experience, most houses are not square to their property lines, and so there is always some variance between the distance from the house to the lot line between the front and the back, so that is not a unique condition.
I would acknowledge that it is not a unique condition, but when a property, when a house sits close to a property line, it becomes a little more into play, in my opinion. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulation were to be carried out. This is where I begin to feel that perhaps this property is not necessarily meeting our It would create a less-than-ideal situation for the particular homeowners in the way that they have proposed to use the property, but at the same time, I can understand where this particular property, because of the way that it is located, could easily have that dining room shifted over, as was discussed earlier. So on this particular one, I do not feel that this standard has been met. I know there are others who do, so I will ask them to state their opinions, or just tell me you don't agree with me.
I agree.
From the other end?
Yeah, this is kind of a tough one. I mean, there's definitely, you guys know I'm not one to design from my chair, but this one, I mean, there's, I understand wanting natural light in the kitchen, I do, but I think there are some solutions that maybe haven't been completely explored. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with you guys on this. I don't think that standard's been met.
I think it's been met, for the reasons I already stated.
So it appears we have a three to two Violetta. Do you have? Hit the button on the microphone here. Yep.
I think it has been met.
Okay. So we are at three to three on that one. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon the desire to extract additional income from the property. I see nothing here that would definitely increase, I mean, whereas it would increase perhaps property values, it's not something that's going to put extra money into the homeowner's pocket, therefore I do not believe that this standard is applicable at this point. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. I believe that this is an existing condition, it is not something that the homeowners themselves have created, and therefore I believe this standard has been met. And then the last standard that we have to find is the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the Zoning Board of Appeals. I know this is going to be another one that's going to be a split decision, so I feel that this standard has not been met. So who, whoever agrees with me, please state that at this point.
I agree, it has not been met.
And for those of you who do believe that the standard has been met?
I believe the standard is met, given the circumstances and given the design concession that's being made in the way the design is being done.
I agree that this standard has not been met.
So with that, we move into our vote. Is there anybody that wants to raise any other issues before we take a vote? If not, I will ask for a motion. Yes.
Process question. This is probably more to Melissa. Do they have to go through the entire process all over again if we don't give them an alternative right now? Do you know what I'm saying?
If you, yes, if you finish the case, then they would need to resubmit with a new plan?
They would need to resubmit, but the question that we've had often before is how soon can someone bring something back to us? If the project is significantly different or addresses a lot of the issues, the board is able at that time to determine whether it is different enough to rehear the case or whether a six-month period is necessary.
The other option would be to, not to finish the case tonight and give the applicant the opportunity to come back with new plans, but then testimony would need to be reopened.
But we can't, if we've closed their testimony, we can't ask them if they would prefer that.
Unless, unless there is a, I don't know how it was procedurally.
They can pursue without a variance.
There is something that they can pursue without a variance, which I think is what this board would ask, recommend, be done anyway, based on the things that we have found in our findings. The particular areas where we have disagreement on the board are in the, whether the owners would have a particular hardship as opposed to a mere inconvenience, and whether this is the. is the least amount of variation needed. Those were the two that had a majority split of the board.
Right. Okay.
So I don't think the board is necessarily looking for a different plan that would be non-conforming. I think the board is looking for a plan that would be conforming and not need a variation, if I'm understanding.
Some members of the board.
Some members of the board. I'll correct that.
See the duck? Oh, it is the duck. Never mind.
So with that, once again, I'll ask, is there a motion on the matter?
Go ahead, Mary Beth.
Oh. In the matter 13ZMJV-01091405 Leonard Place, I move that we, do we do these in the affirmative or the negative?
We do these in whatever the majority would be.
Yes, but we seem to be split.
But the majority is, would have to be a denial in this case, because we have four people who found that one of the standards was not met.
Oh, sorry, I wasn't keeping track. Okay. So I move that we deny the zoning relief requested for a side yard setback of 1.9 feet.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved in second, and therefore, the matter before us on 1405 Leonard Place is to deny the recommendation, or deny the requested zoning relief. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
I will note that the record stands 5 to 1 in favor of denial. Our, we are still waiting for our counsel to come for the matter of 3110 Thayer Street. So the matter of 3440 Thayer Street, which was also on our dock at this evening, has been withdrawn. They will be appearing before us at a later point after being re-noticed, so we'll probably see that sometime beginning of next year. Therefore, we move on to the case for 1912 Livingston Street. If that could please be entered into the record.
Brian and Patricia Stieglets, property owners, apply for major zoning relief to establish one open parking space in the front yard. The applicants request to locate one open parking space in the front yard where open parking is not permitted, zoning code section 61621C1, and where open parking must be located within 30 feet of the rear property line, zoning code section 6463B18. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are variance application submitted October 14, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey dated May 10, 2012, site plan, letter of support from Alderman Jane Grover, images of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and spark draft meeting minutes of November 6, 2013.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? We are being handed an additional packet of information, which will be labeled as applicant's Exhibit A. This appears to be a series of letters of support. We appear to have one, two, two letters of support from neighbors, as well as what I'd be described as a two-page summary by the applicant, a map showing all of the properties on Poplar, and where they have off-street parking, whether it be a garage or an open driveway. I think some of this information we already have. We have plot of, our plot of survey, a series of photos, which I'll get to in a moment. One, two, three, four, five, six pages of photos showing other additional properties in the neighborhood and their parking situation. At this point, if I could have anyone who wishes to give testimony be sworn in, please. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. If you could please tell us your name and address?
Yes, my name is Patricia Stieglets. I live at 2641 Poplar.
I'm her husband, Brian Stiegletz, same residence.
All right. Before we get into talking about your individual project, the packet of information that you presented to us this evening has a series of photos in them. Did you take these photos?
I did.
And when did you take these photos?
Through the course of a number of years. The parking photos on page, well, I'll start with two. Page two were all taken in 2011, when we acquired the property. Page three is 12 and 13, when we renovated and did the landscaping. Page four and page five are from this week.
And page?
And six. They're all from this week.
And do these represent the conditions that existed at the time the photos took or exist currently?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could please tell us about your project and what you're seeking.
Thank you. We own the property located at 1912 Livingston and are before you requesting a variance for a curb cut and driveway. The previous owner, Ruth Merito, lived here from 1950 until 2011. She did not drive, she did not have a car. When we acquired the property, it needed a tremendous amount of work. Now we have a young family who currently resides there with two small children. On a regular basis, they have difficulty finding parking throughout the day. I've outlined why those reasons are for metro parking, northwestern games, street cleaning, snow emergencies. And then every single one of our neighbors on Poplar either has a driveway without a garage, most of them, I think there's only one garage, and everyone else has, garages on the alley. So all of the properties currently have driveways, except for this property, which is odd shape, and we can't put a garage on it.
The two houses directly adjoining it have the exact same condition that we're asking for.
Do you guys live at the house, or is this a rental family that lives there?
No, we acquired, we have a family that's living in it right now. It's a rental family, and we live three doors down. The lady who used to live there, lived there for many, many years. The people who took care of her, the house was really in bad, bad shape. It was uninhabitable. And so they came to us, asked us if we would be interested in fixing it up. So we bought it from her because she was destitute, and she went into a nursing home, and that's how we acquired it. So the ultimate goal was to put my father there.
So where, three doors down, what's your address?
2641, 2641 Poplar.
Okay.
Our sister also lives next door at 2643.
So, sorry, if you're planning to move your father in, who's the family with the kids?
They're currently renting the house. My father lives at a state, and when he retires, he's planning on moving here.
Okay. And when is that?
Hopefully, a couple of years.
Okay.
Or less.
And when did you acquire the house?
In 2011. At the end of 2011. I don't know the exact date.
Right. And you guys live in the neighborhood, so when?
We live four doors down.
Right. So when you bought it, you were aware of?
We were well aware.
You were well aware of the parking issues?
Absolutely. We would put a garage on the property if we could, and I don't think that there's really a, in the minutes here, it says that in the front yard, Poplar, but it really has a Livingston address. So I think the backyard, it's odd, the house is very odd. That's how come I included all the photos, so you could see, I couldn't even fit a garage on there if I tried to, which we did try to. We tried to put the driveway in the back on Livingston, and that wouldn't fit either. And there are no curb cuts on Livingston, except for the alley.
So has the city agreed to relocate the lamppost?
We are.
It's all at our own expense, which we are.
Prepared to do.
Yes.
That's an expensive proposition, isn't it?
Hmm, no.
To move a?
He's an electrician.
Knew that would pay off someday, right?
Where does the family who's renting the property park now?
They park on the street. She was gonna be here tonight. She has small, two small children, so she, I told her it might be a long night.
And has that, that family been living there since you bought the property and fixed it up?
No. We actually, we put it on the market to rent. We tried to rent it, and the very thing that people had a problem with was the fact that there was no parking, and it's a problem to park there. So they knew, and I told them that we were trying to get the right to put a driveway in, but they're well aware that we might not pass.
So what's the section that requires off-street parking?
Can you tell me more about when you, where, when you were trying to put a garage on the lot?
Well, I can tell you that we tried very hard to put a covered parking. A garage just wouldn't fit.
Okay.
So in the covered, we had some plans, and in talking to the alderman, she had thought that the front, Poplar, had more space, looked better. There were no curb cuts on Livingston at all. So then I even had a pass-through where you could drive from Poplar into Poplar and cross through the property right onto Livingston, but that required two, so you didn't have a problem with backing out. But then everyone said, everyone backs out of their driveways, and the other driveway right at 2651, Poplar, is 20 feet away. And there's seven driveways on that street right now.
I'm so confused, because I'm looking at a plot of survey that shows Livingston and East Railroad.
East Railroad is actually Poplar.
Ah, thank you.
The surveys always come up with it as East Railroad.
That's what it used to be called.
How much space is there, and I don't know what's north here on my little thing, that would be technically behind the house? So that would be a budding against the neighboring property on Poplar.
It was less than five feet.
From their house?
Are you talking about?
I'm talking about, yeah, I mean, it's pretty evident, but I wanted to know what the dimension was to the area. If you were to move that driveway to the property line, how close we could come to fitting it behind the house?
Oh, it won't fit.
Okay. I kind of assumed that, but I wanted to make sure.
You're saying between the house and the property line, so in the 7.67 feet?
Oh, that was, yeah.
Yeah. So it's seven foot eight?
Yeah.
And it gets even less, there's some kind of bay window, oh, if you didn't go all the way.
Right.
What I'm looking at is that a number of the open parking along the street kind of run up and hide cars behind, I'm trying to hide an open parking space is what I'm looking to do.
You know the net of that's, doesn't matter.
I know the net of it doesn't matter, but at the same time, it makes me sleep better at night.
Okay.
Because I think, I think one of the things that, that, you know, part of the reason this exists is because we don't want people parking cars in front yards on parking pads. And granted, this is a very, very odd property, but whatever can be done to try to hide the vehicles as best they can.
And that's why I included page four, which shows all of the driveways and the cars that currently sit. In the red house, in the middle on the bottom, 2647, that is the immediate neighbor with their cars, and they have two Priuses that sit in that lot every day. And right next door in the white house, 2651, neither one of those properties has a garage or covered parking. Their cars sit out. We're also on a street that has parking there all day long and cars.
You're looking at the houses now without the second car there. I took a during-the-day picture, so that's, that's why you're seeing this. If you were to look at page four, and you look at the first picture to the top left, you'll see one car. At night, there's two cars. So in effect, you, they're doing exactly what we're wanting to do. That would also be true for, for the?
The red house.
The red house, which would be at the bottom in the middle. That's one car there, and they're, they parked the second one behind it. Now, we've tried to not only make the house pretty, but in our landscaping, we put a slight hump in the, in the parkway.
To mitigate the views, so that you would have?
So, and then, and also, we put shrubbery and trees. A picture's not, it's hard to really tell, but let's see if, see if I can help you. Yeah, if you look at page three, and you look, there's a tree there that's growing right now, so the bottom-right picture, you'll see that there's shrubbery from one side, so if you're coming from central down Poplar, it would hide the car. The only way that it's really in view is when you're turning the corner and going the other way, which would be going south on Poplar. But again, we've got shrubberies, and we planted brand-new trees to kind of, you know, soften that look.
Did you guys ever talk about, and I think you probably mentioned this, so if you wouldn't mind refreshing my memory, actually having the parking be off of Livingston? Who didn't want that?
They, first of all, Livingston is more of a street where people drive very fast.
Right, because it's a light, yeah.
Because they're trying to either beat, I'm sorry, you already knew that.
And there's no curb cuts.
You, she knew that, I'm sorry.
I've done it.
There are no curb cuts on Livingston.
No, but she, she, she's wanting to know why. So we, the reason we did that was because it seemed to be safer and more in view, being that the both neighbors next to us had basically the same thing. I thought it would be more consistent, uniform, whatever the word would be, like it was always there.
Just seemed so much less offensive to me to be off of Livingston.
Yeah, the thing is about Poplar, though, like, that's where all the people park, on the other side of the street, at meters for the metro, so it's kind of like a?
Poplar is a de facto commuter parking lot. I mean, the city has pretty much just ceded Poplar to metro parking.
Yes.
Do you know anything about the history of when the lot was subdivided this way?
Oh, no. This, it's odd, the whole street is quite odd in that some of the properties are divided in half, and are, and the houses are on the alley in the back, if you look at the map of Poplar. So there's, right behind there, there's another house that's off the alley, so?
If you go to, if you go to the downside plan, you'll actually see that there's a house in the alley that has no front yard. Because actually, this is one of the places that has a house in the alley, and it was, I think, probably the coach house to the front house.
There's actually two houses in the alley.
Oh, yeah. 2640 there?
2638, yes.
Yeah. Wow.
And?
And that's why there's driveways for all of these properties, because they don't have alley access.
Hmm.
And they don't have garages.
One additional question. I noticed there's currently listed on the plot of survey, a fence that runs the property.
We took the fence out.
You've taken the fence down. Is there any plan to re-establish a fence around the property, or will it be left open as open yard?
We like it open.
We do too, because fences tend to obscure when you're trying to back out into traffic.
We had a lot of compliments on the landscaping, and in fact, the lady that, the people just moved into the new red house, prior to us fixing the house, they couldn't sell the house. The minute we fixed the house, they put the house on the market. The minute we fixed the house, they put the house on the market and sold it to the new people who have written a letter of agreeance for us. It was really an eyesore.
Are there any additional questions from board members? Anybody else who wishes to speak to us on this matter? Not seeing anyone. Thank you. We will now close the record and begin our deliberations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
General thoughts from the board? A reminder, we are a recommending body in this particular case.
My general, my general thought is, the, the property is obviously very unique. I, I'm sort of torn in a couple ways in this. The property is obviously very unique. And for me, one of the salient points, thinking in favor of the proposal, is the good one, which is that on this block, none of the houses, many of the houses do not have alley access or garage. And so for this particular parcel, as with many on the, on the block, to have any type of parking requires an open parking space in the yard. That said, I'm also a bit torn because these owners purchased the property two years ago, knowing there was no parking, and probably paid a price for the property that reflected that, and had trouble renting the house because it reflected that. And that's sort of the economics of this property. I personally tend to fall on the prior view that we ought to grant the parking, particularly because this particular street, as Beth pointed out, is a de facto parking lot. And the rest, most of the rest of the houses on this particular block also have driveways. And so having another car in that, on that yard, on that side of the street is not unique for this particular block.
I agree with Scott.
Yeah, what Scott said. Good job, Scott. I generally agree with him, but I just remember a case we had a couple months ago, right, where they asked for a similar thing. They wanted to add a pad to a lot that they knew did not have parking when they bought it.
I voted for them to have that pad.
I know you did.
I don't remember, I vaguely remember the case, but I don't remember it being anything like this one, with the property the way it is and the rest of the block being situated the way it is.
Well, there was no other place, there was no place, they had no alley access either. They had no place to put anything on the lot. There was complaints, it's, it was adjacent to.
It was over on Crane Street.
Yes. Down southeast. It was Crane and Sherman. So it was adjacent to Metro and CTA as well. And there were complaints about parking and, and all that sort of thing.
So what, what you just said, I think, is for me, kind of the salient point here is, is, and I felt that way in that case too. It's, if we're gonna say, hey, we want public transit, hey, but we're not gonna provide any kind of parking for them, except for the street adjacent to the station, then we, society, Evanston, us, whatever, the Metro, we've created a very peculiar hardship for people that live on these streets that are immediately adjacent, Crane being one and Poplar being another. So I'm.
Right, but that's reflected in the value of that property, as Scott said. And so that's what.
Right.
Right?
True.
The value of this property.
But I guess I'm kind of thinking of like, safety, I mean, anybody that's gonna live in that property, it's a single-family home, so they're, you know, a family or an older, like, perhaps this family's father, you know, you can't expect an elderly person to, you know, not have any way to access the house, except, you know, possibly three blocks away on an NU game day, that sort of thing.
But then that would suggest that that's not the right, the right living situation for them.
Having a, having a property in Evanston that doesn't have any parking is, is difficult. And when you put it in an area where parking is at a premium for everyone, it puts a tax on everyone else to have to try to scramble to find parking around wherever this homeowner is going to end up putting their car.
I think one of the things that separates this from the, the previous case in my mind on Crane Street is somewhat of the, of the uniqueness of the triangle shape of this property. I think if I'm, and I, and I may be remembering incorrectly, but if I remember correctly, on Crane Street, number one, it was a slightly different shaped property, which I think probably could have had a, an attached garage added.
The attached garage had been subdivided as another lot, because it was a coach house. So it was exactly one of these other situations, yeah, where there's no alley access to it.
I think preserving the value of these homes is important, and allowing for the parking space helps. I think it's a responsible thing to do. It's not a big parking garage.
I think it increases the livability of this house, and I think that it's, they are in a hardship because they're right next to the Metro. And it is kind of like a free-for-all. You can park whenever you want, and I think they should be able to have this. It would help increase their livability in this house.
All right. With that, it appears that most people have voiced their opinions on it. As with the preceding case, we will go through our standards for major variations. These are the same ones as the preceding case. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. I would say that if this were a unique situation in terms of someone wanting to put a parking pad in on a street that was all front lawns, and all of a sudden you had a car parked in the middle of it, it, it would have a, a major impact because of the fact that the city, whether through this board or through previous non-zoning or whatever, has seen their way to allow parking pads in this neighborhood. I do not believe that this is going to have a substantial adverse impact on the properties if one more were to be added. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. One of the things that the zoning ordinance does strive to do is to provide off-street parking wherever possible, moving cars off of public streets and onto private property. Therefore, because of the case where this is, this is taking a car off of a very congested street, I believe that this standard also has been met. The alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. As I mentioned earlier, this is a very unique property, not wholly unique, unfortunately, in Evanston, because of the particular part of town in which this is. We often find homes sitting on triangle-shaped lots. But I feel that this is probably one of the smaller triangle-shaped lots that I've seen. And in looking down the street at the other end of Poplar, we see another one, but it appears to be a much larger property, although it is shaped as a triangle. So I would say that Standard Three has been met as well. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. In this particular case, I believe that most people today are looking to try to find parking that is convenient on their properties, ideally, that this is something that this board has often heard cases of. And wherever possible, we do work in order to try to, to help alleviate the parking situations in neighborhoods. And in the particular case of this one, where, where people are being, because of the fact that this is a heavily parked area due to the Metro and due to Northwestern Games, although that is a somewhat infrequent occurrence, it does place an additional burden on this neighborhood in terms of parking, and that does place a hardship on this owner. So I believe the standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract income. Again, I feel that the standard kind of really does not apply here. I don't feel that by adding a parking pad, open parking space, that it's suddenly going to drive the property values suddenly up and that the owner is going to cash out and suddenly walk away with a windfall profit. So I believe that this standard really does not apply at this particular time. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Again, these properties were subdivided many, many years ago, long before the property owner purchased it, and therefore, I feel that this standard has been met. Number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board. Again, we're not seeing a proposal that is asking to put a large concrete area. It appears that the pad that's being requested is enough to fit a single car on the space. Because of the way the property is situated, I don't know that they really could do much more than that. But obviously, this is, this is, in my opinion, a, the minimum is to get one car off the street if at all possible, so I believe the standard has been met. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or object to in the standards?
I agree with everything you said. Well done.
Thank you. With that, is there any further discussion that anybody has? Hearing none, is there a motion on this particular case?
I'll move in the matter ZBA 13ZMJV-0110 regarding the property at 1912 Livingston Street, that we recommend that City Council approve the variation requested, subject to the condition that the property be developed in accordance with the documents and testimony on record.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, that we recommend approval of 1912 Livingston Street to City Council. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
I'll note that the record stands as five to one, so it'll go to City Council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you. We have one more case on the docket. Before we move to that, I don't know this attorney. So I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself, please. Thank you, Ms. Masonkopf. That's fine, we've been waiting for you. So we move now to the matter of 1310 Thayer Street, which was continued from our last meeting, 3110, I'm sorry. Before we began this evening, we were handed two additional packets of information from, let me get the names straight. From Julie Delara, there were two packets of information that included several pictures. The first one being six pages, which we'll mark as Exhibit A.
Could you mark that Exhibit 23A?
23A, per Council's request.
We've got other exhibits that were previously marked.
Thank you. And then we also have a second set of images, which is stapled together, which appears to be four photos on four pages, and we will mark that as Exhibit 24.
A, B, C, J.
A. I'm keeping them together as a packet.
Okay.
For the sake of not having to have 25 different numbers. We will also given from staff some images which were given to us last week and photocopied and included into our packet, however, they were not duplicate-sided, so we only got one side of the photos. But those actually were submitted last week through the presentation. This time, I'm going to ask anyone who will be speaking to us this evening, who was not sworn in, at the last time, Mr. Long, I believe you were sworn in at the last meeting. I don't remember if, if anybody else was or not. Actually, I do remember. So at this point, if anybody who might be addressing the board on this matter, could please raise their right hand. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. As we stood last time, Mr. Long had presented their plan. Mr. Engelmann had requested a continuance, which was granted. And so I see Mr. Engelmann has returned this evening and has, has the Delaras with him. So at this point, I will turn it over to you and let you bring before the board whatever issues you would like to bring before the board.
Before we do that, let me just disclose that I did, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did familiarize myself with the record. And I'd also disclose that I, I know the Longs, but I don't believe that that keeps me from being impartial and deciding this objectively.
Thank you.
Objectively.
And Violetta, did, were you brought up to speed on this case? I know you're coming in a little late, so.
Not particularly. I'm trying to read through it as we speak.
Okay. So Mr. Engelmann, if you'd like to proceed, please.
Steve Engelmann, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I represent Julie and Francois Corbiere Delara. Stand up. The Delaras live at 2706 Lawndale Street, around the corner from the applicant's, the applicant's legal rear yard, where they proposed to build in addition, runs parallel with and abuts the Delaras' actual backyard. The Delaras object to the variation being requested. Mr. Chairman, since the last meeting, we also submitted to city staff a packet containing 22 exhibits. Those were not entered, those were not read into the record last time, because we just submitted them, and you did not mention them today.
Actually, that's a fine point. We've received a number of, of documents, and sorry for the oversight on that. If I could have those read into the record before we continue.
Additional attachments include the allowed expansion without a yard variation, building relationships and separations, building lot coverage comparison, letter of objection and supporting documents, two letters of support that were submitted at the December 5th zoning board hearing.
November 5.
I'm sorry, November 5th zoning board hearing, and interior and exterior images of the property that were submitted at the November 5th zoning board hearing.
Thank you.
Did that include my packet?
Yes, your packet was the letter of objection and supporting documents.
Okay, thank you. I will first have Ms. Delara explain the pictures and documents that we have submitted in our packet, which we have marked as objectors Exhibit A, and the individual pictures and documents marked objectors Exhibit 1 through 22B. Ms. Delara will then explain the impact the proposed addition will have on her family's use and enjoyment of their property. Following her testimony, I will address the standards required to grant the variations and why they have not been met. Mr. Chairman, new documents have been submitted by the applicant since our last meeting. Is it your intent to let him bring those up during the course of rebuttal? Or should he be presenting those now and then I rebut?
We will, we will, we will allow him to present after you present. We'll give you a chance for rebuttal and then him a chance for final summation.
Thank you. Now I will have Ms. Delara come here, and she will go through the packet with me. I ask you to take out your packet and turn to the exhibits in the back.
Could I ask you to please state your name and address for the record, just so it's on audio as well?
My name is Julie Delara. I live at 2706 Lawndale Avenue.
Thank you.
If you would turn, if you would turn to the third page, Exhibit marked 1. This is the, a copy of the zoning map of the city of Evanston, showing that the applicant's property is in the R1 zoning district. The Delara property is at 2006 Lawndale, kitty corner to the Long's property. The next exhibit, Exhibit 2, is a. The next exhibit, Exhibit 2, is a overhead view from, I believe, the city's GIS. You'll see the Long property with the red mark on it. The Delara property sits directly south and east of the Long property. Exhibit 3 is taken from Google Maps and is a picture of the Delara property on Lawndale, 2206 Lawndale. And Exhibit 4 is a picture from the city of Evanston of the Long property at Thayer Exhibit 5 shows the, it's a drawing by the architect, showing the 2110 Thayer Street applicant's property, and if you will, and to the immediate east is the location of the Delara's house and garage. And Exhibit 6 is an architectural drawing submitted by the applicant of the same situation, except this shows where the addition would be on the property if this addition were granted. Ms. Delara, would you explain to the board what is depicted, excuse me, who took these pictures?
I took them.
And when did you take these pictures?
The pictures in this packet were taken within the past couple of weeks.
And the pictures that were submitted today were taken when?
I believe most of the exterior pictures were taken in June, when the garden was in bloom.
And the other pictures were?
Those were taken just today. They're a couple of interior pictures.
And do these pictures depict what you were taking pictures of?
Yes, they're...
All right. Would you please explain to the ladies and gentlemen of the board Exhibit number 7?
Exhibit number 7, I'm standing in the middle of my yard, and I'm photographing the back of the house.
At the back of your house?
The back of my house. So, there's a large picture window, and you can see a little bit of fabric. That's our breakfast table, and then there are windows, the rest of the windows span the family room.
Where in your yard were you standing? Sorry, just to orient myself to you.
I was standing west of the house, in between the house and the garage. The next picture, I was standing in my, the family room, shooting out into the yard. You see a portion of the family room, you see the breakfast area and the kitchen, a portion of the kitchen.
Would you explain Exhibit number 9?
Exhibit number 9, I'm actually standing in the breakfast room, and I'm shooting out. You see the fence that divides our property from the Long's property, and you see the rear of the Long's house.
So, the landscaping in Exhibit 9, out your window, that's this wall and the fence that's your side of the property line?
Exhibit number 10 is the south rear elevation. It's, let's see, I think, the bottom one is the back, the existing back of the Long's house, and the one above is looking at the western side of their house from the alley and my garage.
Exhibit number 11?
Exhibit number 11, again, the top picture, you're looking at their house, the west side of their house from the alley, and the bottom picture is the, a picture of what the addition will look once it's added to the back of their house. This shot, Exhibit number...
I'm sorry, Exhibit number 12, could you describe that?
This is a shot of the fence that divides our property and the back of the Long's house.
How tall is that fence?
It's a 5 plus 1, so 5 feet of solid fencing and a foot of lattice, although I think this particular section actually is on a raised bed, so it might actually be a 4 plus 1.
And is the fence your fence, or is it the Long's fence?
It's our fence.
Your fence, okay, thank you.
And is the brick wall, the Long's brick wall?
Yes, it's the back of their house.
Could you explain Exhibit number 13?
Exhibit number 13, I'm just standing outside near the back of our house, shooting towards our fence and the back of the Long's house.
And is this the same facade that the Long's wish to put the addition on?
Yes.
And Exhibit 14?
That looks like almost the same picture. It's a, you see a little portion of the raised bed, the back of the Long's house, the fence, and a piece of my garage.
And number 15?
Number 15, I was standing on the second floor of my house, in the bathroom, shooting out over my roof, and again, you see the back of the Long's house, the fence, my garage, and you can see the, a small portion of the ground where they're proposing to build their addition.
You're talking about the 10-foot space between the Long's house and your fence?
Correct.
The white area on the right side of this photo, could you tell the ladies and gentlemen of the board what that is?
This is attached to the Long's house, and it's a sunroom. It's set back, so I don't know how many feet, but...
And is that on the front facade of the building?
It's on the eastern side of the building.
Exhibit number 16?
Exhibit number 16, just shooting towards the front of the lot. I'm standing in about the middle of my garden, and this width is...
Is this, is the house your house and the fence your fence?
Yes, that is correct.
So, this is the gangway on the south side of the Long's house, or on the north side of your...
That is correct. And it just...
Do you know how wide that is?
I think it's about 6 feet.
Exhibit 17?
This is, I'm standing at the northern end of my garden, and I'm shooting towards our neighbor to the south, and there about, there's about 6 feet between them and our fence.
On that side?
On that side, and then there's another between the property line, I'm sorry, it's, yeah, it's, a minute, yeah, it's about 6 feet between their house and our fence.
And that property would be the one located at 2700 Lawndale?
It's the, it's the house directly to the south of us.
And you're at 2706, so that'd be 2700. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, 2700.
Actually, it's 3100 Thayer Street.
No, no, no.
Oh, 27, no, you're right, it's 2700.
2700 Lawndale.
Number 18?
This, again, I shot out of the window in my breakfast room. It's just a view of the fence and the back of the Long's house, and their sunroom, which is east, on the eastern side of their property.
And Exhibit number 19?
Exhibit number 19, it looks like the architect's existing site and ground floor plan.
As it currently exists?
Correct.
And Exhibit number 20?
Exhibit number 20 shows you what it would look like with the addition, the covered stoop, the mudroom, the additional breakfast area, the powder room, and the hallway that connects to their living room.
There was submitted today two additional sets of photographs. I'm sorry, I believe was marked Exhibit A was the six-page one?
That was actually 23A, yes.
Okay.
Were these supposed to be in the packet? Did I double the packet check?
Do you have an extra set of copy that...
Yes, we do.
I sure do.
So, the Longs have received a copy of these exact same pages.
The first picture is, you know, just a picture of the garden. It's around June, it's a picture of the patio and our southern neighbor's home. The picture after that is another shot of the garden, just looking south. You can see a bit of the Long's sunroom. The third photograph is, you know, another picture of the garden. Again, it's the, it's the northern border of our garden, and it's really just to kind of show you what the garden looks like in bloom and what we're growing up against that fence. We get a lot of sun on the fence, and the Longs get that same sun on the rear of their property, the facade. The next photograph is shot from the interior of my dining room. We look out onto my neighbor's brick wall from the dining room. We have also a window that looks east. They're rather small windows, so not a great view.
And when you say your neighbor, which neighbor are we looking at in the, from the dining room?
Twenty, the...
2700?
Yeah, 2700. The next two pictures are pictures I shot from the living room, and again, they're just shots of what I see out of my living room windows, two windows looking at the brick wall of 2700. We have one window that looks out onto the street.
And I believe you submitted...
Sorry, just to confirm, the brick, the two window shots are 2700 Lawndale?
That's correct.
Okay. The three window shots? Or is the third one something different?
There are two window shots. The last two shots are from my, what I see out of my living room window. We have one window that faces east, where you can see the street, but two out of three of those windows face the brick wall when you look out from our living room, and the first interior was from my dining room, looking out of the window onto my other neighbor's brick wall.
So, the first window shot is the Long's house, or...
No, it's Mary Ellen and Henry's house, and so that, what is that?
Is that 3100 Thayer?
The 3100 Thayer.
3100 Thayer, yeah, that's the house on Thayer.
These shots of the garden and the views out of the window were to give you some idea of, A, how lovely their rear yard is, and B, the views they currently have out of the living room, dining room, and upstairs of their, of the current house. You also were given Exhibit 24. Could you explain what Exhibit 24, the pictures in Exhibit 24, and why they were included?
Yeah. The Longs and their architect referred several times to the, their rear yard is not usable and always in the shade. And I think, actually, you have a fine piece of property there. It's 10 feet wide and 72 feet long. It is not always in the shade. It's actually mostly in the sun. The sun hits the back, their, you know, their rear, the back of their house at about 8 o'clock in the morning. As it rises, it starts to, you know, the sun starts to go down the back of their house and across the grass. So, I think they could do a lovely side yard garden, and I just Googled narrow side yard gardens and came up with these pictures to show you that putting a building on that piece of property is not the only way to improve the land.
The walkway, or the alley, the walkway between your house and your fence is east-west, is that correct?
My walkway?
Excuse me, the Longs, the 10-foot strip in the Long's property, where you believe they can put a garden, does that strip run east-west?
Yes, it runs east-west.
So, the sun, once it rises, will continue to be on the area until it goes down? All right. Now, Ms. Delara will talk to you about the impact this project will have upon her family and her property.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Is that too loud? My name is Julie Delara. I live at 2706 Lawndale Avenue with my husband Francois and my two boys. And as you know, the Long's, the Long's lot runs perpendicular to ours, the width of their rear yard abutting the length of our, the side of our lot. And I think the Longs know that we're, we're sorry to be here tonight. We'd like to be accommodating neighbors, but we have some real concerns about their addition, and in its current rendering, we cannot support it because we feel that it is going to have a substantial adverse effect on our use, enjoyment, and the value of our property. In addition, we don't think that it's met the other six standards for getting zoning relief. My husband and I both grew up in apartments in big cities, and like many former city dwellers, we moved to Evanston and bought a home, so we weren't living on top of our neighbors, and we had light and a garden, and we have a child with a chronic life-threatening medical condition, which includes impulsiveness, lack of executive functioning, and developmental delays. He is considered disabled by the state of Illinois. His requirements made our search for a home much more difficult than it was, would be for a typical family. We bought this home because it was near Evanston Hospital, where he's been treated since he was an infant, and since we were often there on an emergency basis and are sometimes there on an emergency basis, it becomes very important to know the staff, the emergency room staff, and they know us, and they know Michael. In addition, we're close to a fire station where they have paramedics, and that's also important in the event of an emergency. It's very important that the paramedics get there as soon as possible. We also liked this home because it was away from busy streets. He has been known to wander, and because of his impulsiveness and lack of executive functioning, he's not a kid who is going to look before he crosses the street. So, we, and in addition to that, we, you know, we're specifically looking for a house in the northwest pocket of Evanston, because he goes to a therapeutic school in the northern suburb, and he fatigues easily, and we felt that, you know, just the additional 15 minutes it would take to go from south Evanston to his, you know, to the highway, it's just 15 minutes, we felt, would be too much for him over the long haul. The other huge draw to this house was the kitchen.
The other huge draw to this house was the kitchen, the kitchen family room, which overlooks the garden. It's, it's a space where I'm able to, to sit, I can cook, I can make phone calls, I can do paperwork, and I can still supervise him. And it gives him a feeling, in our house and garden, that he can move independently, which is important for a little guy. Once he steps out of our house and garden, you know, people hover by necessity. We still made over $10,000 worth of modifications to the home, so it was, and garden, so it was completely safe for him, and we've lived in this house for about two years. The Longs' proposed addition will span the entire back of their home. It will leave a two-foot, nine-inch sliver between their exterior wall and our fence. If you include the roof overhang and the gutters that they're going to have to add, it's going to leave more like a one-foot, nine-inch space between our fence and their addition. While some of the addition does face the garage, a lot of it faces our garden. And will bring the outside wall of the addition to within arm's length away. The proximity of the addition to our property is far less than required by the R1 zoning district for a rear yard setback or even a side yard setback. It would cause our property to exceed the building lot coverage of 30% and would, and we, we believe it poses a safety problem, an aesthetic problem, and a privacy problem. It increases the density on our little corner of Evanston and contributes to the extinction of starter homes and the urbanization of Evanston, which is occurring one house at a time. The addition will pose an aesthetic problem, and that will substantially diminish the enjoyment and value of our property. It is also not in keeping with the comprehensive general plan, along with the zoning ordinances, which regulate height, bulk, and the proportion of building to lot size. Our garden faces the back of the Longs' house. Their existing rear brick, rear brick wall provides a neutral backdrop at night, and it completely recedes into the darkness, giving us a sense of peace and privacy, which we feel is an important characteristic for this, this piece of property. The addition will add substantial bulk to their home, and the closer that bulk comes to our fence, the more imposing it will look. This will substantially diminish the view that we currently have from our kitchen family room, which overlooks the garden. The wall of our kitchen family room consists of one long line of 72-inch-high windows. In the past two years, we've invested over $20,000 to restore the garden. We live in our kitchen family room. I think you could really blow the rest of the house away, and it wouldn't matter, because that's where we are. We cook, we eat, we work, the kids do homework, and through it all, we can watch Michael as he moves back and forth between the house and the garden. It is our only unobstructed view to the outside, as most of our dining room windows overlook the brick wall of our neighbors to the northeast, and most of our living room windows overlook the neighbors to the south. Diminish our view from this kitchen family room, and you will diminish the value of the property. In past cases, we're addressing height and setback allowances. The board has expressed concerns about bulk and has required homeowners to make modifications to their plans based on those concerns. And I would just reference 321 Hartzell Street, the Alaco and Gentile case, where there were substantial modifications that were made to the plans. Having the wall of the addition so close to our living space with three windows on that wall will invade our privacy. It will bring the everyday sounds of both our homes unreasonably close to the other, the barking dog, the, you know, the cooking smells, the glare of interior lights, the kids' music, and just conversation. You know, it's very, very close. If I'm standing watering my plants at that fence, and the Longs are in their kitchen, we're having conversations, I really do believe we'll hear each other. And I think that the Longs may not even realize now, because we have that 10-foot buffer between us, that it will, we think it will diminish their, their enjoyment and the value of their property as well. Just last meeting, this board refused to grant zoning relief for illegally placed air conditioning units, when only a single neighbor protested about noise or potential noise. We ask that you play, apply the same logic to prevent the Longs from placing their addition too close to us. I think setbacks are, you know, also a function of trying to give people some privacy. The Longs have the burden of proving that the addition will not have a substantial adverse impact on our use and enjoyment of the property and value of the property. Absent, and they haven't brought in anyone to testify regarding this issue, all the testimony is, is mine. And absent that proof, that issue regarding use, enjoyment, and value of the property should be resolved in our favor. We believe the proximity of the addition will also pose safety issues for our family and invitees, and therefore conflict with another goal of zoning, which is to protect the health, welfare, and safety of the community. With such a small gap between the roof of the addition and our fence, we're concerned that debris, ice, and snow will slide or blow off the roof and onto our service walkway, which runs from the east side of our house to the west side of the house along the fence. While gutters and downspouts may direct runoff to that two-foot, nine-inch deep yard, or, or possibly in, you know, a little bit further into the corner of their lot, the reality is that, that gutters clog and ice over, and downspouts fill with leaves. And if they have those gutters less than two feet away from us, I mean, I have seen in these, some of these heavy storms we had, the water just cascades over the lip of the gutter. It never gets to the downspouts. We believe the proximity of the addition will also pose safety issues, uh, hang on. We're also concerned about the possibility that our child, or someone else's child, may be able to access the addition's roof, gutters, and windows. The gap of only one foot, nine inches, after including roof overhang and gutters, that the Longs proposed leaving between their addition and our fence, is exactly the length of my nine-year-old's arm, from his shoulder to his fingertips. And this is the child, my child, who is disabled. It would literally be child's play for him to climb the fence and get on the roof. Our son will find the proximity of the roof and gutters impossible to resist, even if he knew the danger. The inadequate setback may compromise the safety of other children who come to play in our garden, some of whom have the same issue, issues as Michael. We've included letters from Michael's, one from his therapist, one from his state respite worker, and, and one from a mother whose child comes quite often and lives across the street, just to support our fear that the allowing, that, you know, we're concerned about the kid's safety in the garden, and our feeling that allowing the Longs to build so close will be creating an attractive nuisance on our property. We're also concerned about the fire hazard that the inadequate setback will create. No representative from the fire department was at the Spark meeting when 3110 there was discussed. Nobody from the building department either. One of the functions of setbacks is to limit the spread of fire and the rapidity with which fire spreads. The International Residential Building Code establishes minimum setbacks for exterior walls, openings, and projections for fire safety, and we believe this current plan violates Section 302 of the 2012 IRBC, which has been adopted by City Council. Given those code violations and the fire safety issue, we're also concerned that our insurance premiums are going to be raised, because, you know, insurance companies are, they're not, you know, they're in, they're in the, they're in the business of making money, and they're very good at assessing their risks, and, you know, we feel like it's, we're going to be coming to them with a pre-existing condition, which is going to be a detriment to the property. So that's all I have, and I'll turn this over to Steve.
Sorry, I have a bunch of questions for you, ma'am.
Yes.
Sorry.
Of course.
Can you just look at your, the exhibit nine? I think that you, this, you said this is the view from your bay window to the backyard? And is that, is that the Longs' house, the brick house? Or the brick?
Um, yeah, I'm standing inside the, the dining area, the kitchen, yeah, the breakfast nook, and I'm looking at our fence and looking at the back of the Longs' wall, which is about 10 feet away.
Okay. And so the view, the view that you're concerned will be lost from the addition is a view of your backyard and then an existing brick wall?
We're not going to lose the view of our backyard, but that brick wall is just going to come closer and closer. And what you, you know, you also see, there's a portion of that brick wall, you know, when it turns the corner, you see only a portion of the brick wall now that's facing east, but once they build it, they come out, that's going to widen. So instead of looking at sort of that sharp corner, we're going to be looking at a solid wall as well.
All right, okay. And how, how high is that fence?
It is, it's, in the area, it varies. It's mostly a five-plus-one, but we have that raised bed, and I think at that, for that section, it's a four-plus-one.
Okay. And not at all to diminish your son's disability, but you allow him to play out in the back by himself?
I allow him to play in the back while I am watching him.
Okay.
But I don't have to, at this moment in time, because there are really no hazards, I don't have to hover over him. I don't have to be, you know, in, in grabbing distance of him.
Has he ever climbed the fence?
There is, there is one tree that's in the back of the lot that he has climbed.
Has, and did you, you allowed him to climb the tree, or what did you do when that happened?
No, I tell him to get down, I tell him it's not safe, but, you know, um-
Did you consider removing the tree?
Yes, except that he plays back there and it provides shade for him, which is critical for his medical condition. He's, he can't get hot, so it's, it's kind of a, a catch-22. We also considered removing the apple tree on the raised bed, but, you know, would be sad. It's a 25-year-old apple tree, it's beautiful, it's kind of the focal point of the garden.
Did you consider removing the brick wall that is approximately one foot high, that he could climb up on to get higher access to the tree?
That raised bed?
Yeah.
Yes, but you have to understand that he can, he can stand at the fence, and at this point, and, and grab the lattice.
But he hasn't.
Not yet. But part of the reason, if I may interrupt for a moment, is-
Sure.
There is nothing of interest to him at the moment that is above the fence.
Understood. Can you turn back one exhibit to exhibit eight? Your exhibit eight?
Yes.
Is that, on the left window there, is that your garage in the back?
It is.
Okay. And is that, has your son ever climbed up on that trellis under the window?
The trellis under the window? It's just, you mean that-
The flower, the flowerbed box?
It wouldn't support his weight, I mean-
Has he ever tried to climb up on it and fallen from it?
No.
I have a question for you about sort of the Longs' property generally. I mean, it looks to me, just eyeballing it, the Longs' property is approximately half the size of yours. Is that fair?
I, I, you know, I have no idea. I-
I'm just eyeballing it, I'm not-
Right. There, I believe there, that, that lot, you know, where the Longs are, there's another house on that lot, too. I believe it is wider than our lot. It's roughly the same length, but it is quite a bit wider.
And is there a location where the Longs would put their addition that you wouldn't have a problem with?
Well, I think they have a couple of options. One option would be to keep their, the current location of the addition and just give us a reasonable setback. And we're suggesting that reasonable setback would be five feet. That's, that's a setback for, and, and part of the logic behind that is we have roughly about five feet between the edge of our garage and the fence. He hasn't tried to climb that. You know, and so that would be one option. The other option would be simply going into their garage to get the space and then moving their garage further north.
Okay. So I understand what you're saying, but when you say going into their garage to get the space, do you mean moving the whole addition to the alley side? Or what do you, what do you mean by that?
I mean, they would, the, the garage adjoins their kitchen, so they could make that a habitable space and make that part of their kitchen, and then rebuild a garage. They have quite a bit of space. They have a parking pad now in, in front of the existing garage, and they could use that to build a garage.
But you, you acknowledge that on Thayer Street, the front of their house pretty much runs aligned with the way the other houses are set back on Thayer Street, as a thoroughfare?
I believe that's correct. But, you know, the construction of having a colonial with a garage coming forward is not unusual.
I don't have any more questions right now.
There's still room. The garage is set back from the front of the house, so you're picking up a few feet that way without changing the line of the house.
Yep, I see that. I'm just thinking about function and not just the space away from the property line? Trying to consider the needs of function as well as the space?
Sure. Of course, you know, absolutely.
That's true. Thank you.
I'm sorry, any other questions?
Any further questions for Mr. Delara? All right, Mr. Engelmann?
Mr. Long, at his presentation last week, said several times that the rear yard is unusable, wasted space. It actually is not. What that rear yard does is provide some of the setback that this community, through its comprehensive general plan and zoning ordinance, have expressed, is desirable and valuable, open space. The fact that it is currently an uninviting concrete patio is the Longs' doing. It could be a garden or, and, excuse me, it could be a garden or otherwise usable. But the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance both set, both urge the community to have open spaces between properties, especially in the R1 district. The R1 district is the district with the least density allowed. Nor is habitability a criteria for determining setback. The statement that was made that the addition does not bring their house any closer to the Delara's house is disingenuous. The issue is not when the, where the closest place is, but what is the perception and perspective of height, setback, and bulk? I believe, can't remember the case, I think it was the Gentile case. Ms. Byrne raised the issue of starter homes, and that small houses on small lots are not unique to Evanston, actually, they are a part of the fabric of Evanston. They promote the diversity- They promote the diversity that we all moved to Evanston for, in this case, socioeconomic diversity. So those setbacks are important. Similarly, the exhibit that you will be receiving tonight, or that you received since the last week, which talks about what, the house, if the house were fitted on a 72-square-foot lot, is irrelevant because the property is not 7,200 square feet. And I would point out that the neighbors from whom the letters were received supporting the Long's project were received predominantly from people who are not affected, can't even see the property. The Long's have not met the standards required to obtain the variations requested. The alleged hardship or practical difficulty is not particular to the property. There are many properties in Evanston that have a legal, non-conforming lot with the building placed close to the lot line. These are generally located abutting corner lots and run perpendicular to the abutting property around the corner. If you'll turn to Exhibit One, directly north of the Thayer Street, 3110 Thayer Street, across the street, you can see similar small, lot that's been cut in half and with two houses on it, small house on small lots. Just in that neighborhood, we don't have pictures of them, but just in the neighborhood, the intersection of Central Park and Hartzell, and the intersection of Lawndale and Isabella are another examples of the same lot configuration. These houses tend to be smaller and are the starter homes, as I referred to before, which help Evanston maintain its diversity, especially in the R1 zoning district, which mandates the lowest density in the city. Not all houses need or should be built larger than the legislated building envelope. The Long's will not suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the zoning regulation were carried out. The items they are asking for are convenience items, not necessities. They have a functioning kitchen and a functioning powder room, which has served them well for nine years, and the people before them for some 80 years. These are fairly typical of many homes in Evanston. In fact, both the Delaras and I have, have powder rooms that are, like many powder rooms in Evanston, fitted under the stairs going to the second floor. The Long's currently have both a front and a rear door leading to the outside. Do they need a third entrance, as they are proposing to build? Do they need two new entryways and a mudroom? Lacking space in this instance is an inconvenience, but not a hardship that would justify major zoning variation and violating building codes. The alleged difficulty or hardship, the small house on a small lot, was or should have been obvious to the Long's when they purchased the property. They're sophisticated individuals. Amy is a lawyer. They have had, they had actual or constructive notice that the placement and size of the home did not conform to the zoning laws in effect when they purchased the property. They bought a small, irregular lot and should have known that building any, any addition would require zoning relief, which might not be granted. We don't believe the Long's have met their burden of proving that the requested variations require the least deviation from the applicable regulations among the feasible options identified here tonight or before. We disagree that the Long's statement in their application for a major variation, that the addition is modest and the only visible means to modernize the kitchen, the kitchen. The addition spans the entire back of the house. If they look, if you look at their plan, they are not really modernizing the kitchen so much as using the additional space to add an extra eating area to the existing kitchen, create a mudroom, increase the size of their existing powder room, add a hallway so they can modify the flow of traffic on the first floor, and create an additional entryway and door. Those are a lot of modifications to a home that has adequately been accommodating a family of four for nine years. As suggested at the ZBA meeting last, on November 5, there is some empty space in the plan that could be eliminated if they tighten up their floor plan. They, that would bring them in compliance with the 30% building lot coverage regulation. They could also build east, or they could convert some of their garage into kitchen space attached to the garage, excuse me, attached to the, excuse, abutting the current kitchen, and expand into that space, building another garage or extending the garage forward. They may not be desirable alternatives, but they are feasible alternatives. Granting a major zoning variance should be the exception and not the rule. Otherwise, you erode the legitimate purpose of the regulations and the property owner's faith that the regulations are fair and implemented impartially. Homeowners have a right to build on their property, but that right is not absolute. They may not build at the expense of their neighbor's rights or the city's right to protect the health, welfare, and safety of its citizens, or the aesthetics that the city has decided to regulate. I want to reiterate what Ms. Delara said during her presentation. A 2.9-foot setback between the Long's house and the Delara's fence is not allowed under the 2012 International Building Code.
International Residential-
International Residential Building Code. If you have a property that is five feet in depth, as was the previous, if you're within that five feet, you'd have to have higher-rated fire retardant walls. Less than three feet, you are not allowed to have openings and you are not allowed to have projections into the three-foot yard. Here, they're proposing a 2.9-foot yard. Melissa, when you were looking just a few minutes ago at the, at the minutes of the Spark meeting, did you find that the Fire Department and the Building Department were not represented?
The Fire Department was not represented. The Building Department was represented by Spark Chair Walter Helen, who is the city's commercial plan reviewer.
Okay. We didn't, we couldn't tell that from our, our examination. And my question that I sent to you never got answered by the Building Department, although I did talk to Dean Mosca. But in any case, under the 2012 code, a 2.9-foot setback is just not acceptable. We suggest that the Long's have not met their burden of proving that their addition meets the seven standards required to create an exception for them. Their proposal is not in keeping with the intent of the comprehensive general plan or the zoning ordinance. It poses a fire and safety hazard, promotes unwanted density, fails to preserve their, our diverse housing stock, or maintain the character of the R1 district in which it is located. By upholding the existing zoning requirements, you, the board, do not diminish the value of the Long's home, nor deprive them of the use, enjoyment, and value of their property. They will continue on as they have for nine years. But by granting the relief requested, you will substantially diminish the use, enjoyment, and value of the Delara property. The Long's will not suffer a hardship if relief is denied. What they propose to gain are not necessities. They are inconveniences. Small houses on small lots are not peculiar in Evanston, as was earlier said tonight. They are, they help give Evanston its diversity and neighborhoods their character, and to the extent there are any inconveniences, the Long's knew or should have anticipated those inconveniences at the time they bought the property. Lastly, the addition proposed does not represent the minimum change necessary. As was said, they can build to the east, or they can move the garage forward on the lot and gain buildable space within the current rear footprint. The Delaras do not believe that the standards for a major zoning variation to the extent sought have been met. They urge this board to deny the application for zoning relief. However, the Delaras want to be good neighbors. It is within this board's power to condition the grant of zoning variances. In the event this board believes that some variation is warranted, perhaps the Long's can modify their plans as the Delaras have previously suggested to the Long's. Give the Delaras a five-foot setback between the exterior wall of the addition and their property line. Shorten the length of the addition so it doesn't protrude so far east, and eliminate the stoop and door at the southeast corner of the Long house. Use higher-fire-rated materials. We suggest brick to match the current exterior wall. And eliminate the windows and, excuse me, and eliminate the windows and require the Long's to build on a slab so that it will be cost prohibitive to build another story down the road. The Long's get to keep the rear entrance and covered stoop, the mudroom, the breakfast nook, and they have room to enlarge the powder room. If you would turn to Exhibit 20. What we are proposing, what we propose to the Long's and what we are proposing would be a compromise if this board were to think that they had met all seven standards. Take the addition and, take the end of the new addition and move it back two feet. It would be approximately just inside the powder room wall, just inside the so-called additional part of the mudroom wall. Eliminate the stoop and, and entrance door in the southeast corner. Once you eliminate that entryway, you can take the powder room and increase it because you have this long hallway that is, that, of all the wasted space, is wasted space. You still get to maintain the mudroom, although slightly less wide, the covered stoop and We don't think that even this grant of a variance is warranted, but it is reasonable and a win-win for both parties. Thank you for your patience and your consideration. Do you have any questions?
Are there questions for Mr. Engelmann at this particular moment?
Yep.
I don't believe there are any right now.
I'd like to make one more statement.
Ms. Delara would like to make an additional statement?
I know it's difficult to understand a child like this. And it's, it's really just a small piece of our objections, but, but, Mr. Gingold, I, you know, I understand, I mean, I, I, it's not a remedy just to tell Michael not to do something. He has an uncooperative brain. It's part of his medical condition. If there's something that's attractive to him, that he thinks is interesting to climb or to do, it becomes a battle where you have to just constantly, you know, repeat. Does he learn? Yeah, he learns. I mean, he's learned not to, you know, stick his hand in the fire. But that would be a hard lesson for him to learn, to possibly climb on the roof and fall, or even just fall attempting to climb it. And I'd like to submit one more letter. We hesitated. It's from another one of my respite care providers, a different one. And it's emotional, so we thought maybe we shouldn't. But I think it explains a little bit better how it just becomes a battle with him, and he can't, he can't really stop once he starts obsessing about something. It's, so, if I may.
I just want to say, I did not at all mean to diminish the challenge that you and your family face with regard to your son and his condition, but I wanted to ask you some questions about things in your own backyard that appear to be hazardous or dangerous in the way you describe a roof overhang and see how you handle those challenges.
Well, the, you know, the, the tree, as I said, you know, it's, there's, there's nothing really for him to gain by climbing that tree and going to the other side. He's, he's, he did it once. I addressed it. Now I'm gonna obviously watch, watch out for it. You know, the hanging basket is usually filled with plants. And, you know, he hasn't approached it. I don't think that he, he could even use it to get up on the roof. I mean, he's, he's, he, you know, he's, he's smart, just impulsive, and that's the challenge with him. And he doesn't, the lack of executive functioning, he doesn't have that little voice in his head which says, oh, don't do that, because remember last time you did it, Mom got really mad and you got punished and you lost your iPad and, so probably you shouldn't do it because then she's probably going to punish you again. He is living in the moment. He's not really, he can't, he's not necessarily instructed by the past, certainly in that moment when he, he sees something and just, you know, goes for it. You know, if, if you allow them to build so close, how will I handle it? Well, you know, I'll, I'll be in the garden with him a lot more. Or he won't be in the garden as much because, you know, I have a household to take care of, I have a business to take care of, I can't just spend all day in the garden with, you know, it's, it's, it's part, it goes also towards use and enjoyment of our property. All the mothers I know in Evanston turn their kids out into the garden and they look from time to time. I'm much more vigilant than that with him. But it would be nice to still have that garden where he can be safe and I don't have to be on top of him. So, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, are you going to?
I would formally ask that you accept into the record Exhibit 24.
I think we're at 25 now.
25. Fine. Thank you.
So just for the record, we are receiving Exhibit 25, which is a letter from Dorina Russ.
Please.
All right. Does anyone have any questions at this point before I let Mr. Long?
Yeah, actually, I have a couple more questions from Ms. Delara. Hi. So I, I don't want to seem to be prying, but I'm just, I'm trying to kind of, since it's a pretty integral part of y'all's argument, like, how old is your son? He's nine. He's nine. And what is, I'm, I know you're not a medical professional. What is his prognosis? Like, how do you expect to handle his condition moving forward? I wish I had a crystal ball. And his doctors, his team of doctors, would say the same. We don't know. We don't know if he will mature and develop an ability, you know, become less impulsive and develop some, you know, better executive functioning. We're doing everything we can for him. He takes medication just for this purpose of trying to slow him down so he can, you know, maybe have that thought. And we work with a behavior analyst who comes... You know, she sees him twice a week. Again, there's a letter in the file from his behavior analyst. You know, we're actively trying to work on this, because, you know, it's hard for him, it's hard for us.
Sure. Sure. So, as... And I guess, and I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to pry, and I don't want you to reveal, you know. So, specifically to this situation, as he matures and keeps growing and gets bigger and stronger and more able to climb things than he is currently, I mean, do you... What are your plans to further safeguard your space?
You know, our plans evolve as he does. I can't, you know... We try and look into the future. We try and peek at the future, but, you know, we can't predict it. And, you know, you can get really so worried about the future that you're not enjoying the moment.
Sure.
So, we'll deal with it. But at the moment, I have to take him the way he is. I, you know, we feel, and his therapist feels, and his respite worker feels, that this, you know, that the proximity of the gutters and the roof overhang are gonna really be a temptation for him. He is a climber, and he is an explorer. And, you know, we had to modify the inside of our stairwell in the house, which was... The balcony guardrail was spindles. And when we bought the house, we knew that we would have to eliminate that, because we just knew it wouldn't be a question of if, but when Michael would decide to walk along the inside of those spindles or, you know... Because it looks like a jungle gym for him. So, we ended up enclosing the spindles and putting two-by-fours up to the ceiling and drywalling. So, now, you know, I mean, it's crazy. We have drywall that goes up, I don't know, that's over my head, and I'm five feet. So, you know, we hope someday we'll be able to take the drywall down and have a real balcony guardrail with spindles, but we don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to give Mr. Long, who presented some new documents in the packet to us, an opportunity to explain those and give us an idea as to what those documents represent and everything.
Well, if you want to start with that, that's fine. I think Diane's actually the appropriate person to address those documents.
Okay.
Do you want to hear from the homeowner first, because Amy didn't get to speak last time?
Actually, I'd like to hear about the documents first, because that may raise questions for us, for the homeowners.
Sounds good.
And just if you could state your name again, please, for the record.
My name is Diane Keon, and I'm the architect for 3110 Thayer Street. The reason I did these drawings, this was clarification from the last meeting. I did have an eight-and-a-half by 11 of the allowed expansion without the yard variation, which is A. And although it seems very obvious, you just, you know, the graphic does indicate where you could actually build on this lot without any variation, and you can clearly see that you cannot practically expand the house without a variation. And the proportion of an addition without a variation is impractical due to the lot depth of 60 feet and the location of the house on the property. I think Ms. Burns brought up the idea of moving the garage forward. I do want to, you know, kind of express the fact that the streetscape has great symmetry. The sunroom and the garage are in the same plane, east and west of the main two-story piece of the house. Has great context in the neighborhood. Moving it forward to the north would take away a window that faces west from the dining room. There are very few windows, as you can see on the plan. They really do not want to lose that view. Their kids also play on the street and bike and do sidewalk chalk and all that, so it's a very nice view from where they have their dining space. And also, going... Not only does it ruin the symmetry, but going forward would create a weird carbuncle of brick, maybe not matching brick, coming off in the same plane. And then you'd have to re-roof the entire garage to... It's just a lot more work for just not that much space. We'd probably have to ask for a front yard setback variation on that one. The B, drawing B, is building relationships and separations. This drawing shows the distances from the proposed addition, from the 2706 Lawndale one-story rear yard addition. The proposed addition is farther away than any other building on the adjacent properties, and also farther away than the existing one-story sunroom on 3110 Thayer Street property. The dimension was taken from the corner bay window, like, the center of that window looking, you know, at the southeast corner of Thayer Street, and then the new addition, and then the corner property at 3100, as well as the lot to the south of 2706. The drawing C shows basically the building lot coverage comparison. And although, you know, we realize it's obviously not a zoning legal lot, we are in a neighborhood that has many, many non-conforming lots. I mean, if you look at the comprehensive plan, I think they say it averages the city of Evanston, seven houses per acre. That's already putting us under the 7,200 square feet per acceptable legal lot. We have many houses that are 33-foot wide lots. The minimum required is 35. So, this was just looking at, you know, the hardship of what, you know, the 32.9% on a 72-by-60-foot lot. It seems like we could shave down 2.9%, but it is very critical that we, you know, we absolutely need that to make this addition work for the program that my clients want. Taking off that, you know, going down to 30% will, you know, is a 45% reduction in the floor area of the addition that we're proposing to do. So, that's almost half the size.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Keon?
If not, I'd like to... Could I please go through my rationale for what...
Yes, you may.
Why we did what we did? It seems a little redundant, but I just want to state that the property at 3110 Thayer Street has the two abutting properties, which front on two different streets, Thayer and Lawndale. The east side of the 3110 Thayer Street abuts the west side yard of the corner house at 3100. Both of these houses front on Thayer Street, and both of these houses have rear yards abutting the north side yard of the property at 2706 Lawndale. There is only one property along the south lot line of 2706 Lawndale Avenue. Because of this corner condition, the property at 3110 Thayer Street has a limited buildable area when conforming to required setbacks. Corner conditions where lots on one street are subdivided along the side yard of a property on the perpendicular street occur frequently all over Evanston. Although it is a unique condition relative to the zoning ordinance, it is not a unique condition relative to the fabric of our neighborhoods. The Evanston zoning ordinance does not have specific criteria to address these situations. That is why we're here. There are a number of homes in Evanston similarly situated to each other where a property's rear yard abuts the side yard of an adjacent property. In many of these properties, it appears that the rear yard is treated like a side yard condition. The rationale for the three-foot setback, and I'd like to say, I keep hearing two-feet-nine inches, it's 2.9 feet, so that's two feet 11 and 3/4. Let's call it three feet. Considering the location of the 3110 Thayer Street and 2706 Lawndale Avenue parcels, the criteria considered was what structure may be allowed in proximity to the common lot line. If a detached garage or other accessory structure were or could be constructed in the rear yard at 3110 Thayer Street, this structure could be constructed with a three-foot setback from the rear property line, and it could be built to a height of 17 and 1/2 feet, much taller than the proposed addition. If the same side yard setback criteria for the 2706 Lawndale property was applied to the 3110 Thayer Street property along the common interior lot line, a garage or accessory structure could be constructed with a three-foot side yard setback, and this building could also be constructed at the height of 17 and 1/2 feet. Also, with that same side yard setback criteria, a principal building could be constructed with a five-foot side yard setback to a height of 35 feet. And with a minor variation, this 35-foot-tall principal building could be constructed with a three-foot, three-inch side yard setback, which is a 35% decrease from the required setback of five feet, a relief of another 1 foot 9 inches. These were all considerations when the one-story proposed addition was being planned. The house at 3110 Thayer Street was constructed long before the city adopted a comprehensive plan and its current zoning ordinance. Neither should be considered an obstruction for the ability of a homeowner to reasonably and responsibly improve their property. There are some additional drawings, which I went through in the package just now, and I hope you take those into consideration in the planning of this proposed one-story addition. With a modest one-story expansion at the rear of the house, we will greatly improve the functionality of the kitchen, provide a usable mudroom, access to the east side yard from both the kitchen and living room, and a powder room conveniently located to serve the ground floor spaces. The proposed rear yard addition is the minimum change necessary to meet the desired program, improve the functionality of the residence for contemporary living, while preserving the open east side yard green space, which is an asset to the broader neighborhood, as well as the abutting property at 2706 Lawndale Avenue. It's pretty clear in the definition of the zoning ordinance that the purpose of the variation stating is to relieve a particular hardship or practical difficulty that the regulations of the zoning ordinance may impose upon a landowner because of special or peculiar characteristics of the property that make compliance with the zoning ordinance difficult or impossible. Keep in mind, the comprehensive plan is a guideline, not a code, but I did look at that as well in looking at the proposed addition, and they do emphasize encouraging the preservation and creation of neighborhood open and green space. There's also, in general, discussing the design, building design and landscaping in Evanston. Building designs and site plans should be consistent with the feel of existing neighborhoods. Green space in neighborhoods should be preserved as much as possible, whether it is in a public park, a parkway along a street, or in private front and side yards. Green space is a critical component of a livable community, because it helps to soften the feel of the urban environment. And that's what I have for now.
Thank you. I don't know which one of you would like to go first?
I'll go first, just with a couple of points of clarification. I'm Nick Long. Most of you have seen me before. Mr. Engelmann made a statement that there were no other letters of approval in adjoining properties. I want to correct that, that there were two. One to the east, Hank Ben Swanger and Marilyn Tainer, whose letter was in the package from November 5th, and Hank actually came and spoke last week. And also the Hugheses, Pat and Bridget Hughes, who are across the alley to our west, so obviously not directly adjoining because of the alley. And then, obviously, there were also letters of support from some of the neighbors to our north, including, obviously, our architect being one of them who didn't really feel the need to put a letter in. Also, the way the sun currently moves across the horizon, the proposed addition would not impact the garden that we're looking at on the DeLara's north fence. Physically impossible, because of just the way the sun works. So, just wanted to make that clarification.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Long? I think we asked this last time, and I unfortunately can't remember the answer, but I had asked about a second-floor addition in the future. And what was your answer to that?
We have not envisioned that over this kind of, over this addition in the back, and we actually have talked about that on either side and have really, every time, walked away from our discussions, you know, just over a glass of wine or whatever, saying, "No, that doesn't really make sense." And we know that from the bulk discussion, that'd be a whole nother conversation as well.
And particularly where we're talking about doing this addition, that strip in the back wouldn't really gain us anything in the upstairs. If there's one bedroom facing the DeLara's property in the back corner of the house, that would be sort of an awkward add to that room to run it down. I couldn't foresee why you would want to do that kind of addition on the second floor there. I wanted to clarify a couple of things about our house, that it still remains a three-bedroom starter home. There's nothing about this addition that gets us some giant house that, you know, we increase any size of rooms or any... All the simple thing... We're not adding a room in any aspect of doing this. We're trying to make the kitchen a little bit bigger to make remodeling it feasible. If you look at the pictures we gave you last time, you can see what the interior of our kitchen looks like. It's tiny. With that bathroom sitting in the middle of our kitchen, we really... We're... You're two, three feet from the toilet at all points in time when you're standing in our bathroom. I mean, it's smack in the middle of it. There's nowhere to put that bathroom in our existing floor plan. We talked last time about how we don't have a... We have a center entry colonial in the exterior from the door that comes in, but our staircase is not in the middle of our house. It's in the back of our house. So, we have no way to carve out a place in the house to put a powder room. We thought about that. We can't. And the need for a back door, we have a back door, but again, if you look at the pictures, it smacks into the bathroom door when the two open, and there's no space when you walk in that back door to put anything, to do any... The simple thing you can only do is walk in through that door. There's really nowhere to go there. The basement door is... I couldn't get a picture that actually got all three in, all three sets of doors in it, but the basement door is immediately to the left of the back door. So, there's three doors that are all within a couple of square feet right there, or two, about two feet wide. So, really, having a functional back door is a big deal. We have two children. We have a dog who apparently barks. We, you know, it is important to us to have some access, and what we would like is the access off the alley. That's a safer way to get into the house. It's an easier way to funnel traffic into the house, particularly the kids, so all their stuff doesn't end up in our tiny little entryway at the front of the house every time they come in. So, nothing about this addition is creating... It's giving us 279 square feet, which we are getting three uses out of, that small space. And as Diane pointed out, because our lot is 60 by 72, and it is so small, any addition to our space sounds big in percentages. I understand the desire to try and cut it back, but cutting us back to the 30% takes away almost half of what we're asking for, which will eliminate at least one, if not two, of the functions that we're trying for here, which we believe are essential to our living in this house. The nine years that we've lived in the house, we've become very attached to the neighborhood. We're very attached to the house. We waited nine years to do this, to think about what we wanted to do, and honestly, to save the money to do it. We weren't able, when we bought this house, to buy a bigger house. We weren't able, when we bought this house, to do these immediate changes to it. But did we buy the house hoping that we might someday be able to remodel that kitchen and get a little more functionality out of it? Sure. And I think every homeowner in Evanston buys a house with some desire to make improvements to it, and we're just landlocked in what we can do. So, and we really do believe that that space in the back is not particularly usable. I appreciate the design suggestions, but we've lived in that house for nine years. We've tried to use that outdoor space. We stare at the neighbor's garage. We stare at... We have the alley with the trash cans on the other side of it. None of that makes it particularly appealing to use. And as the one who does the gardening on our property, nothing grows back there. I have Hosta along the fence. That's the only thing that's back there in the summer. It does not get the sunshine, they're saying. Because their garage is there, our house is there. There's a six-foot-plus fence there. There's not... There's no sunlight coming in back there. That space isn't particularly usable for us, which is why it's the logical place to do it, and as Diane said, preserve the green space on the east side of the house, because that is our real garden. That is our real green space, and it's the biggest chunk we have in the modest space we have. What else? As for the water issues, that was discussed at the Spark hearing. I was questioned on that issue, and we did talk about how that could... How there are no existing water issues in that space right now, and that anything we do obviously has to comply with all code, and we would be routing water. We already did the topographical survey. Water would be routed the correct direction. That obviously all has to be complied with if we were to move forward with this project, and we certainly would. And the fence issue. This is... I mean, it's a hard one for us to talk about, too, because we are parents, and we understand... and we understand the desire to protect children, but we'd like you to know that they put that fence up. When they moved into that house, there was a relatively new fence that we had contributed to the cost of that was there. They came to us asking for their needs. They needed to replace the fence. We said, "Sure." We didn't ask to have any part of the design of the fence, any of that. So the lattice, all of that, they chose. They put that fence up at the height they desired with the lattice on top of it. That's not something we played into, and we were happy to support them in that decision. It's a perfectly lovely fence. We have, we had no issue with it. But one thing we would like to point out is that at the, you can see it a little bit in the back picture that we submitted, the one of the rear property, from our, the rear of our property from the alley, the fence that they chose touches their garage in the back of their lot. To the extent the fence is some sort of climbing hazard and all that, it touches their one-story garage right now. So I would just put that out there as to, this fence, we, in the addition we're proposing, will not touch any fence. So the, to the extent there's a climbing hazard, it would seem to be the one that is in their own property. And Diane can clarify, too, the 1.9-foot issue. I don't think it's actually correct. The roof overhang would match what is existing on the existing garage. The architecture of it, from my understanding, would be to wrap it around the back of the house. It has a relatively, I don't know what the right word would be, narrow overhang at that point, and that, that same thing would continue. We wouldn't have a one-foot-plus roof overhang off the back of the house. That would look goofy. It, it wouldn't match what's there.
You could, Amy's very first picture shows the eve extensions. You can see the garage. It's very, very shallow. The only thing that gives it shadowing is the gutter. It, it's probably a five-inch, you know, projected eve with an attached gutter at the one-story level. That's what we would attach.
And we, too, are reasonable people. We, we've all along have been asking the Dalaras what we could change about this that gives us the functionality we're asking for and makes the modest improvements to our home that we're asking for and would meet their needs. The five-foot setback is what we've heard all along. That doesn't give us the space to do any of this. That gives us less than five feet on the interior, in which case we can't relocate the bathroom out of the kitchen. We're simply just pushing the bathroom back four-plus feet. There's really no, there's nowhere to tuck it if we don't get that hallway that we don't consider frivolous. We consider that hallway an integral part of giving us a little bit of flow in the house, because right now we have none. We have three rooms in a row. You can just walk between, in the kitchen behind the dining room. So you can just walk between the rooms. There's no way, there's no flow whatsoever. So it gives us that flow, and it allows us to tuck the bathroom in a, in a space that is not actually in the defined kitchen space. So that, to us, is a big part of this. That said, we could give a few inches, is my understanding, and we were, we were happy to do that. Diane could speak more to that. There is a little bit of play in the setback that we're asking for, but it's nothing in the neighborhood of two feet. Anything, anything more than those few inches will cause us to lose, we will be giving up either the tiny mudroom space or the hallway with the powder room in it. One of those will have to go if we get cut back or we get cut in more than just those few inches.
You said basically that there were three things you were looking to accomplish with your addition, and my understanding is those three things are you want an enlargement of the kitchen?
It's really to get the bathroom out of the kitchen.
I'm, I'm going there. The addition of an entrance off of the alley to the west side of your property. Is that right? West, yes. And to move the powder room into a place where it was not intruding onto the kitchen.
Sure.
So those are the three things that you are looking?
And the flow. The flow being the?
Access to the yard, too.
Okay, well, I heard three things. Now I'm up to five. And so what I'm trying to do here is find out what is very important to you.
Sure.
What is very important to them, and whereas I hate negotiating all these things as a board, I think this is a case where we may be able to come to an agreement where everybody gets a little bit of something and is happy.
Sure.
Which is not normally the way I like to do this. Normally, I like to look at a proposal and say, "Yes, it's good. No, it's not good."
Sure.
But we have architects who like to do things up here, and I have a feeling this may be one of those cases where we look at what is important to you, what is important to the Dalaras, and is there something in between that we can reach an agreement to make everybody happy, give everybody most of what they want, but not everything they want.
Sure.
So that's why I'm trying to narrow down as to what is important to you in your redesign.
Getting that bathroom out of the kitchen is a huge part of it, and having a functional back door where we can come and go, if I'm prioritizing, that, those are my, that's the first two, if you're in agreement, obviously. This is, this is a two-party agreement.
All right. So, does anybody have any other questions from Ms. Long? I think I interrupted you. I don't know if that was?
You got to what I was getting to.
Anything else that you would like to?
Can I just add, keeping the garage?
Keeping the garage.
There's no scenario under which I'm willing to swap my powder room for my garage.
Okay.
That, that doesn't seem like, that seems like trading one hardship for another at that point, so.
All right. At this point, I'm going to let Mr. Engelmann, who's now had an opportunity to look over the additional documents that were submitted, and I know you maybe had some questions about those, I'm going to let him return to ask his questions, and then the Longs will have an opportunity to sum everything up at the very end.
Interestingly, the architect, the architect made a number of statements that were exactly the same statements I made. The comprehensive general plan promotes open space, and what is being proposed is not promoting open space. It's in, it's an encroachment upon what's comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance mandated for open space.
Mr. Engelmann, I have a question for you on that. In the letter that was submitted at the beginning of your packet, one of the things that was stated was that the requested variations require more deviation from the applicable regulations than other feasible options. At that point, have you identified feasible options that do not require a zoning variation from this board?
No, I haven't been able to do that other than, I haven't been able to do that. I'm not an architect.
I'm not asking you to. I just did not know if you had looked into?
If you look, the architect is correct. It's the building, front building line is twenty-seven feet, and the rear yard line is three feet over. You end up with a strip that's only three feet wide. So everything needs a zoning variation. It depends upon what kind of an impact those zoning variations would have upon the people surrounding them.
Right. Okay, thank you.
The architect also said that small houses on small lots are not unique to Evanston. And the idea that, when Mr. Long said, "We're not creating, by this addition, we're not creating a big house," excuse me, a big house. The issue of bulk and the issue, and the McMansion argument that raged about a year ago, didn't address just large houses. It addressed large houses in comparison to the lot's size. While it is true that the Longs' house is not a, and with, even with the addition, is not a big house by standards of houses, it is big on this lot.
But if the Longs wanted to build this, if they wanted to take out their one-story sunroom and put this extension on that side of the house, they could build it a full two stories tall without seeking any relief, and that's a much bigger structure than what they're asking for. Would you concede that?
I don't know whether they could build that, because they'd be invading this, the yard, and they're tearing, and you are, in your given, they're tearing down an existing structure. I think, I, I don't know the zoning ordinance or the building ordinance as to whether or not a, once you tear down?
Take my word for it, that they could do things that are much bulkier than what they're proposing.
Okay.
So, your, your point is taken about bulk, but it is a small lot, and it's a small house on a small lot, and it's packed into the corner of the small lot.
I suspect that this board hears from almost everybody that comes before it for a variation. This is a lot less than what we could have done.
No, we don't hear that from everybody, but it would be nice if we did.
If I could just interject here, I don't believe that they could do anything like you are proposing, because they're, if they were to tear down that, that sunroom, they don't retain any?
The variation.
Any, any, it's a non-conforming, pre-existing condition. If they were to tear the sunroom down, they lose that. It's not like a fence, where if you take down a fence and replace a fence.
Yeah, they have a big side yard.
But they couldn't be compliant with the front or the rear.
Right.
The front requires a twenty-seven foot.
That sunroom would be in the, in the rear yard, and so it wouldn't be allowed.
This is one of the problems all small, all houses on similar lots in Evanston have with their insurance companies. If the house burns down, they can't rebuild. So if they tear down the sunroom, I think the chairman is correct.
I'm, I'm not sure. My, my only point was, I think that in some respects, it's a modest request. They're not seeking to build a two-story addition that hovers over the Dalaras' home. They're seeking to do something that actually is as far on their property from the Dalaras' home as it can be.
It is a modest request if you look at it only from the Longs' perspective. It's a very modest request. Looking at it from the Dalaras' perspective, it's a significant request, because they've got a ten-foot sideyard setback. They want to take seven-point-one feet of that ten feet and put an addition on it. So suddenly, what was supposed to be, I think, a thirty-foot setback, fifteen-foot setback, was it, became a ten-foot setback for low these many years, and now they want to make it a 2.9-foot setback. Those are significant in comparison to, to the progression. It's a, it's a significant encroachment in what was existing there.
To the architect's point, if we were talking about putting a garage there of even higher, of even higher bulk or higher girth, we wouldn't be having the conversation, they could put it three feet from the lot line.
A garage?
Yeah.
In the required front and rear yard?
No, yeah, if, if their house was on a different, if we were talking about building a garage up to the lot line, it would have a much lower setback. Their house is located in a unique space on a small property that unfortunately puts us in, in the middle of a discussion we're trying to come up with a resolution for.
And I've been trying to come up with a resolution for it ever since I was retained.
All right, let's move towards that.
I would like us to just hear from Mr. Engelmann and refrain from hypotheticals, because whether we think it's going to be on a larger lot or not, it doesn't matter because it's not. So, Mr. Engelmann, if you could continue.
The architect also said that the zoning ordinance should not prevent responsible building. It does that all the time. People come in here with reasonable building proposals, but because of the impact it has on neighbors, or, for instance, the, the condensers last week, or, last meeting, very reasonable issue. Nobody had been complaining for three years. Even members of this committee seemed to be skeptical about some of the testimony here. And yet, the letter of the zoning ordinance clearly said that it's just not acceptable. That's why we have the zoning ordinance, and that's why we have the comprehensive general I, I didn't say they did, when Mr. Long said, I said something about the letters of support. I don't believe that I said anything about them not abutting the property. I said they were not impacted by the addition.
You did say that people didn't even have, the people that were in support didn't even have a view of the property. I do, you did, you did say that. Not, not to nip it, but you did say that.
Okay. Two people do have a corner view. Our proposal, if you want to get into the, no, let's not get into the discussion of settle, of resolution until you guys have had a chance to speak and investigate that. That's all I have. Thank you.
If, if I could just before, sure.
I just wanted to comment on the fence that we put up. We put up a five-plus-one because that's what we're allowed to put up as of right. Anything taller, we would have had to ask for a variation. We went to the neighbors. We, we went to the Longs before we put up the fence. We talked to them about what we needed. We explained the situation with Michael. The Longs actually said, you know, "Put up what you want." But Mary Ellen and Henry were concerned about the height, and the Rosenbergs were also concerned about the height. We could have gone higher. We wanted to go higher, but because our two other neighbors were concerned about the height, we just put up a five-plus-one. As far as the fence touching our garage, the, the gate posts touched the garage, nothing else. He can't climb the gatepost. There's, sorry. Francois, just make sure it's. Sorry, my, my mother is, my mother and my teenager are babysitting Michael, so. So, it's funny, because when we first put up the gates, the way they constructed the gate, there were horizontal planks, you know, we have the bad side of the gate. There were horizontal planks and then vertical planks that were, you know, nailed into it. That day, I was, I was going to go out the side door with Michael, and there's, you know, there's a, the gate was right in front of him, and I decided to go through the front of the house, and I thought he followed me. But he didn't follow me. He decided to go around through the side door. I came out the front. I didn't see him. I turned the corner, and there I see him at the top of the gate, looking at me. He had climbed the horizontal planks. So I called the, I called the gate people, and I said, "You, you, no. You have to put boards on the other side so he can't climb it." So that's what we did.
Thank you. We're going to go back on the record. I believe we're recording once again. So, Mr. Engelmann, you've had an opportunity to speak with your clients.
My clients, and what is important to us, and the only thing that is really important to us, is the five-foot setback.
All right, thank you. This is now an opportunity for the Longs to sort of make their summation and tell us anything they feel we need to take into consideration that has not been shared yet into the record.
I think it's quick. Not much left to say at this point. The purpose of this board is to grant relief to people who have non-conforming lots like ours. That's why we're here. I mean, that's pretty simple. Obviously, we want some relief. We want to be able to do some of this, at least. We're not unreasonable. We're happy to talk through this. We've been trying to do that, and it's the five-foot, the five-foot, the five-foot every time. And honestly, that feels like it's an attempt to block us, because they know we can't do this with a five-foot setback. So that's why we're here. We would have loved to have resolved this before and not put you all through all of this, but that's why we're here. So if we can have an honest conversation about that, we're totally open to it. And I'm sorry, we're making you do that for us.
That's fine.
So, I'll, I'll close it out. You know, we, we have kids, too. I think some of you have kids, and it's always hard, you know, whether they get sick or there's something worse. It's always, you know, hard. We take it all very seriously, and we are not in a position to opine on any aspects of what we've talked about with the Dalaras' son. We are not, you know, we're trying to do, we, we, you know, as, as we said, you know, we talked about doing bigger stuff to the house, you know, many times. Every time I go and do a project in the yard, I think about what else we could do to the house. I have tried to go grow grass back there in that back area for nine years and have not been successful, and I've tried just about everything. So, you know, we figured that's, there's another way to use that space to gain some of the things that we've talked about. And we, quite frankly, are a little uncomfortable with being held to a standard with respect to the fence adjoining the garage that the, the Dalaras are not holding themselves to, whereas our addition would not touch the fence. I want to make that very clear.
The part that was pointed out, it's not the, it's not the- The part that was pointed out, it's not the, it's not the side with the gate, it's the other side of the garage. The fence immediately adjoins the one-story garage with a shorter roof than what we're proposing to put on our one-story addition.
Or the south side.
That's the part that has us frustrated about that.
I have a picture of that.
I have a picture if you want it, but you can see it a little bit in the back of that other photo.
I mean, the fence goes right up to the garage.
And it's the same height as the rest of the fence all the way around the yard.
All right. Anything else you'd like to say in summation?
We're done. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will go ahead and close our record and open it up to the board for discussion. Obviously, there's a number of issues at play here.
Well, my only comment would be, certainly Evanston's a unique suburb in that we straddle the border between a suburb and an urban environment. And the reason we're so popular is because there is that closeness that you get to know your neighbors, that there are people next to you, that there is that connectivity. So, that in and of itself, if the expectation is to have some sort of palatial backyard unencumbered by neighbors, then this is the wrong location. I think it's a unique property. We face this situation all the time. I don't think the proposal is unreasonable. You know, they've been reasonable in wanting, you know, they're willing to negotiate inches. You know, that's, I think, quite generous. And the neighbors at 2706 Landale don't seem to be as equally engaged in finding that solution. I'm inclined to support the variance.
I agree with what Clara said, and have already made a few statements about my opinions about the hardship caused by the lot and where the house is on the lot, as well as the modest proposal. And I'd also be in favor of granting the variation as requested, but if there's a solution that we can come up with that makes everybody happy, then I'm in favor of that
My first choice would be to find a solution that makes everybody happy. I think there are some serious issues, serious issues here. It's getting late, I can't talk. On the other hand, I do agree with a lot of what Clara just said. So, I would like for you guys to find a way to be next-door neighbors for a long time to come and be happy. But I also, I don't agree with Mr. Engel, a lot of what Mr. Engelmann had to say tonight. I don't think that what they're asking for is, is an assault on the comprehensive plan. I don't think it's unreasonable. The reason that we exist is because there are lots of substandard lots in Evanston that need, that have hardships and need to be addressed, and Mr. Engelmann has been here many times arguing the opposite case, so. But I, you know, that's your job. So, all that being said, I'd like to move to some sort of hopeful resolution as well, so.
I wish there was a resolution that you both could live with, but I also, for the reasons stated, support the variance.
So I will, so, I'm fairly well-known for having a couple of things that I'm fairly hardline on, and one of them is a minimum change necessary. And I do think that this is a reasonably modest plan. I think that there is probably some opportunity to be able to modify it so that there can be, so that they can achieve the goals of the Longs, the three, three goals that they're looking for, as well as get some relief for the DeLara's as well, which would also help to make the minimum change necessary, make the change necessary smaller. So it would reduce potentially lot coverage, it reduces the degree of nonconformity of the variances that are being asked. So, from my perspective, one of the things that sort of resonates with me is if this was a typical lot adjacent to them, what you would be allowed to build in the rear yard would be an accessory structure that's three feet off the property line. And so, they could build a garage. If this was a full piece of property, you could build a garage in that location. And so, for me, what I see as a, as a good compromise is for the, for the distance of the rear yard setback of the DeLara's, whatever that might be, wherever you can build your accessory structure, the Longs be allowed to have that three-foot setback. That lets them get that mudroom, it lets them get the breakfast room, it lets them get that space that they're craving for so that they can move that powder room out. Then, once you get east of that garage, you switch to a five-foot side yard setback. It still leaves you five feet for a powder room. It doesn't get you the great circulation, which I agree is very nice from a planning perspective, but not necessary. And so, it's a way to change, it's a way to give a little bit to the DeLara's and to give, get the Longs 99% of what you were looking for, which was the bathroom out of the kitchen, a breakfast area, and a mudroom with an exit to the alley side. It gives you a three-foot side yard setback for a portion of your property, and it gives the DeLara's a five-foot portion where that addition would be beyond their garage. So, those are my thoughts.
So, just to clarify, so you're kind of talking from the southeast corner, that would be a much, a more narrow addition, and then it would make a jog at whatever the, whatever that is, wherever a garage could go?
Wherever that is, within, you know, a foot here or there.
Right, okay.
It just seems like a reasonable compromise to get everybody to a tenable position again.
Right.
What would be, and I'm asking Melissa this, what would be the, the setback from the DeLara property viewing the length of that in which they could build that accessory structure? Could it be anywhere in the backyard, or is there a spot at which that suddenly ends?
It would run that full length of that property line. There would be a three-foot setback the whole way for an accessory structure.
But it, but it could run literally up to their house almost, for example, let's say?
No, I think he's talking if the, if the, if the lot next door, so let's go to the, the neighbors to the south of the DeLara's. So that's a typical, you know, front yard alley property. So that, it's a five-foot side yard setback for the, for the main structure, and then the accessory structure has a three-foot setback. That accessory structure.
The three-foot accessory structure setback would start at the back of the house.
Because it's an accessory?
Correct.
Okay.
I might throw one other suggestion out there. We talked about this when there was a fence issue in another case pretty recently, and I was speaking to climbing abilities of small people, and if this was at all acceptable that you, the DeLara's, DeLara's, I'm sorry, might want to consider changing your fence. I know that you were trying to preserve some transparency for the neighbors, but you might want to consider, you can go to six foot without a lattice, and that's a safer, I just recently put a fence around my property, and I did not consider lattice at all just for that reason, because I have some rambunctious children, and they're just going to find a way up, and the lattice is, is like a climbing wall, actually. You know, it has the little holds. So perhaps if this all came to pass, the area that was only three foot, the addition that was only three foot off, you might want to consider changing the fence panels in that area. I don't know, and that's just a suggestion, but anyway.
The way I think I'd like to proceed on this is I'd like to go through the standards and sort of see where we are in terms of what people think. And then if there's talk afterwards, we could talk afterwards before making a motion. As mentioned before, there are seven standards that we have to go through in order to determine whether or not this project meets the requirements outlined in the zoning ordinance for approval of a major variation. The first one being, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. This is one we've heard substantial testimony on from the DeLara's in regards to their concerns with how the addition would impact their enjoyment of their, of their property. I think that there have been valid points raised on both sides. However, I would feel that this standard has been met due to the fact that, whereas there will be some impact on the way that they use their yard, or that they feel their, their neighbors are interacting with them while they're in their rear yard, I do not believe that it is a substantial impact, but one that would be customary for many of the neighborhoods that we find in Evanston, and is part of, as Ms. Weinberg mentioned, the nature of being sort of the suburban characteristics that many people find here to be part of the nature and character of the, of the city. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Again, we've heard substantial testimony on this one. Where we, we do find that there are cases in which the zoning ordinance recommends against certain types of additions, certain types of structures. The zoning ordinance also provides for us to exist as a board and to hear exemptions to those outlined guidelines and rules. And I believe that this ordinance, or that the ordinance does intend for, for instances where a property that is a substandard lot be allowed to come before us and present their case. And so, I believe that this standard also has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Again, we've heard testimony on this particular case. The zoning ordinance was written after many of these corner lots were created, and I have the feeling that if it had been written beforehand, it would make our lives a lot easier. However, we have to deal with these peculiar lots, and although there aren't hundreds, thousands of them in Evanston, we do have our fair share. It is very, very difficult to make any sort of an improvement on a 60-by-75-foot lot. We have heard some testimony about starter homes. I, for one, am very strongly in the camp of maintaining starter homes. I believe that the additions that are being requested are not changing the character of this house from being a starter home. And so, I would say that this, this is very much maintaining the, the intent of a small property like this being allowed to continue to exist in the city of Evanston, so I feel that this particular standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a peculiar, a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were carried out. It is difficult sometimes to determine what is important to some people and how that weighs in relationship to what is important to other people. One person's hardship is another person's inconvenience. In this particular case, what I see, the applicant requesting is not something that is necessarily creating a particular hardship for them. It is a little bit more of a way that their house would better fit them and better fit the current standards of what one expects in a house. Kitchen sizes have changed over the years. Addition of powder rooms is nice, not always there. But the fact that they already have a lot of this and are trying to reconfigure it, I think does present a hardship for them in their ability to, to make this space work. It's, it's been an inconvenience to them. I think one of the reasons that they finally have come to us is because it's reached the point now where it is creating much more of a hardship for them than just that mere inconvenience. I believe this standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. This is one of those things where I don't think, if we were adding an additional bedroom, a master bedroom, something like that, we could see a substantial increase in the property. But again, this particular homeowner is not going to derive an income from that. If we based this purely on whether or not a, an improvement would increase the value of the home, we would never approve anything. Because our hope is that any improvement to a home is going to increase the value of them, but not necessarily generate an additional income. So I believe that this standard has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Again, this property was created long before any of us were here on this board, probably before most of us were living in Evanston, and is something that was not necessarily foreseen. And so, I don't believe that anybody who currently is involved in this had any, or any, any intent in creating this particular property that we're addressing today. So I believe that this standard has been met. Number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board. I think this one is the one that's kind of the crux of the situation as to how much space is actually necessary in an addition. We've heard comments from the DeLara's that they would, they would very much like to have a five-foot setback from the property line. We're currently looking at something that is just shy of a three-foot setback on the property line. Quite often in looking at these, we, we tend to look at what is the, what is the use of the space that's being created? I don't think that, that we're creating any large rooms that are above what would be normal for people. I mean, a powder room is a powder room, it's a small room. And I think a mudroom, of course, would have to have certain dimensions in order to make it somewhat functional. I believe that the standard has met, although I will entertain anybody who feels any differently from that or any of the other standards to make their points as well.
Yeah, I don't think the, I don't think the standard for the minimum change necessary has been met. I think that there are opportunities to make it smaller such that you don't have as large a request for building lot coverage, which we all know affects impervious surface, which affects flooding and the way water permeates in the neighborhood, and affects all sorts of things. And I know that a small percentage doesn't really change the whole neighborhood, but it's that aggregation of those small percentages over time. And as we keep giving away 2% and 5% and 10%, and suddenly neighborhoods are flooding in five years, I don't really want to be part of that. So that's one of my concerns is the lot coverage. And then, just that I think that there's an ability to tighten everything up so that both neighbors can be happy.
I, first of all, I agree with you, Matt, that all, I think you went through and said your opinion that all of the standards have been met, and I agree with that for this proposal. That said, and to address Mary Beth's point, I think that you can go through any proposal that we hear, almost any proposal, and say, "If you took an inch or two off here, that's less obtrusive than what they're proposing, and therefore, the minimum hasn't been met." These, this proposal is to add 279 square feet, and there are ways, they've conceded there are ways, they could take inches off, perhaps back from the lot line. I don't know that at 279 square feet, that's going to make much of a dent in the... in the, for the size of this house and property, much of a dent in the building lot coverage that we're talking about. But given, given that they are so close to three feet now, and given that we've sort of talked about three feet as a accessory structure, were this an accessory structure, it might make sense for us to say, let's set it at three feet. Let's, that's an, that's an inch or two off of where they are. It's slightly less obtrusive. It's a matter of inches. It's not going to put them under 30% for the lot coverage, but it's a little bit less. And, you know, it's, it's something that if we were talking about an accessory structure, we're not creating some kind of crazy setback for, for the uniqueness of this property. That said, I think the standards are met as proposed, and I would vote in favor of approving the proposal as is. So, that's just an attempt to see if we can get you by compromise.
Well, considering the neighbors weren't amenable to a compromise, and I agree with your assessment that the standards have been met, I think the modest three-foot hold is reasonable.
I also agree with Matt, but I also agree with Mary Beth. I think that all the standards have been met, but I agree that the flooding is a issue with regards to the lot coverage, and it would be a mistake if we continue. But however, in this case, I feel like they all have been met.
Okay. With that being said, it appears that most people believe the standards have been met with the proposal as it stands. So, I will ask if there is a motion.
Well, so, wait a minute. So, we're not going for a compromise at all?
Saying the three foot.
Three foot?
I mean, I'm going to base that off of what, what the motion is. I mean...
I liked Mary Beth's proposal.
We're not the designers.
That's true. But we said we were, but we said we were actually going to try to, to reach some sort of compromise. Now, I...
The neighbors didn't want to come.
I think, I think...
So, I don't think we're designing. I think we're just giving them what the setbacks are. And whatever they would like to do within those setbacks, they can do. It gives them enough space to do, to achieve the goals they have identified as achieving.
I think the three-foot hold is reasonable.
I don't know that it does. I mean, maybe it does. In your opinion, it does. In, in your opinion, it also takes away their ability to design a flow for the space. And again, we're talking about a total without the modification of 279 square feet. It's not, they're not building a giant addition onto the back of their house. They're building a very small amount of space to make the space they live in functional. I don't, I don't personally feel that going halfway down the house and having it jut in another two feet and then having it run the rest is a good solution. That's my own feeling.
It appears that we have the intent to approve 99% of what is before us, but request the three-foot setback. If I'm hearing the majority of people, that we set that as the standard for this particular project. So, if that is what is being said, then I will ask for a motion that would state such.
There you go.
All right. I move in the matter 13ZMJV dash 0104 regarding the property at 3110 Thayer Street, that the board approve the variation requested with the modification that the setback granted is limited to three feet from the property line, and that the property otherwise be developed consistent with the documents and testimony on record.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in the matter of 3110 Thayer Street, that we approve the requested variation with the condition that the development not be any closer than three feet to the property line. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So...
I'd never do that.
We have a vote of four to two, which is enough to carry the motion, and therefore, the requested variation as conditioned is approved. Thank you. I think that wraps up the issues on our agenda for this evening, with the exception of, we have been handed a memo from city staff for meeting dates for 2014.
Nothing. Way ahead of schedule.
So, what are we, what are we being asked to do here?
So, the schedule before you sets out the, the typical zoning board schedule of the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday of every month. There are a few exceptions. In January, the third Tuesday of the month falls on the day after Martin Luther King, which is a city holiday. So, city council falls that night. So, instead, I'm suggesting that we move that to the fourth Tuesday of the month. And if the agenda permits, that we can cancel that meeting, so that we would not have back-to-back weeks, then that would be great. Other than that, the Sept, the second meeting in September, as usual, falls during the CDBG hearings that are in council chambers. So, in the past, we have canceled that. However, the city is now set up to record meetings in other rooms that are large enough to handle the zoning board. So, we could simply move any conflicting dates to a different room.
I would make the recommendation that we put that date at least on our calendar, and then, if necessary, try to work around it, if possible. If we have, like, one case coming, if we shift that to before or after. But it sort of depends on how many cases we have pending. I don't want to give up a date if we have a bunch of cases that are kind of backing up on us, as much as I'd love to meet in those little rooms. So, are you asking us to approve this?
If, if everybody's comfortable with it, you can have a motion to approve it if you'd like to think about it until the next meeting. We do have time for that.
Can we look at him?
Fine.
Why don't, why don't we go ahead and, and move to adopt this? And then, obviously, if we need to shift dates as we get closer to them, we always do that anyway. But at least this puts us on the calendar for these particular days. So, with that being said, is there a motion to adopt the ZBA meeting dates with the change of September, bringing in a meeting that would also be on the 16th? Is that right?
I move that Mary Beth make the motion.
You know how many motions I've made in the last two weeks?
I know. That's, it's exciting.
Crazy.
I move that the zoning board adopt the proposed dates, proposed, set forth on the memorandum we were presented with.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Therefore, the motion carries, and we will publish those as our dates for the next calendar year. No other matters being before the board. We stand adjourned.